I'll call the June 3 budget work session of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance and I assure you, we will make time to hear all of you this evening. This is again, I will reiterate, this is our first work session since it's been given the county manager's recommended budget. So, we're here to listen, gain evidence. This is the first time we as commissioners have had the opportunity to hash this out among ourselves. I know there's going to be some questions for county manager. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions for some of you here in attendance. I'm sure Lori, our finance director, is going to have several answers for us as well. So, I appreciate it again. Appreciate all of you being here. So, with that being said, we're going to try and get through this as quickly as possible. I know we don't want to make it home for dinner and have to be with our families. So, we'll start off with our fire department budget discussions. I believe we have two departments that are asking for a tax increase for this year. Just let's go the alphabetical order. We'll start with Burnington first. Welcome, Mr. Schuler, welcome. Thank y'all. Just to give a little background to those in attendance here, Burnington's current rate per thousand is .1056. They're asking to go to .112, which is approximately a 5% increase roughly. And I think it's about $12,000 annually. So, I'm going to, I'll let you do your presentation, but I've already got questions off that.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Michael Schuler. I'm chief of Burnington Fire Department. The day I come before you, not only as a chief of the fire department, but also a community member of Burnington Iowa, before you in your booklets, you have our budget request for the fiscal year '21-'22. I've asked for a $12,000 increase from, like Mr. Tate said, from .1056 to .1112. As a homeowner myself in Burnington, Iowa, I don't like to see an increase in my taxes, but as I, I do know as a fire chief, sometimes it's necessary. Do I want to see an increase? No. I know how hard it is to survive these days on the pennies we make. But what people don't understand and what people don't see is the cost for anything in public safety these days. Sometimes they're doubled or tripled in value just because you put fire, EMS, or law enforcement in front of it. What they don't see is the PPE or personal protection equipment we have has a life cycle on it. Bunker gear has a 10-year life cycle and it has to be changed out. Medical supplies in the last three to four months went from $18 and some cents for a box of medical gloves to $33 a box two weeks ago. Epi pens, our department are one of the only fire departments of Macon County that carry epi pens because we're so far out. In the last three years, we've saved three lives because of the epi pens. Adult epi pens are $693 a piece for us. Child epi pens are $423 a piece for us. This time last year, fuel prices, we were paying $1.80 a gallon for diesel. We have our own diesel tank. Last week, we paid $3.10 a gallon. And like before, like I said, anything in public safety has an expiration date on it. The epi pens included, they're good for one year. If we do not use them, we have to dispose of them and get new ones. If anybody has any questions or anything, feel free to ask. I'd be more than glad to try to answer them for you.
Well, I'll start. Chief Schuler, I appreciate what y'all do. And of course, I think that this board doesn't support all of our volunteer fire departments at 110%, or we do our best to do so. I've got to ask from a financial perspective, though, $12,000 is such a minimal increase overall. I mean, I understand most houses might, it might only increase their taxes a dollar. Some of it's going to be more. But can you not find that in your budget to not come with just a $12,000 increase?
Last year, we had, I understand that. Last year, we done three fundraisers. This year, we had four planned. We've already done one.
I understand. I didn't think about that, about the extra money that you gave from those because of COVID. You probably weren't able to hit those.
Right. We were not. The reason I'm asking for the increase is just to cover the fuel, the cost of epi pens went up and stuff like that. Everything else, we can pretty much cover with the budget we have. I wouldn't be asking for the $12,000.
If you weren't that tight.
If we weren't that tight with the increase of maintenance fees and stuff like that. For a engine to get the oil changed and the engine is a pumper tanker, it's $723 just for an oil change this year. And that's something, the inflation that we wasn't counting on in the budget from last year is the inflation and with everything else with COVID going on.
Sure.
And I don't want to go more higher than that because I know how it is to pinch pennies and live paycheck to paycheck, especially in our community. I mean, we see it. We've got a lot of people that's on social security and disability and stuff like that.
How are you doing overall over your truck payments, your building payments, or any of that? I mean, I know you're building. You've got a new one, so it won't be coming off anytime soon. Do you have any trucks coming off?
Now, we have one truck coming off in October, correct? And other than that, we have only got one more truck and then the building itself, and that's it.
Chief Schuler, are you still having to maintain, you still having to maintain the building at Davis Creek too, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Are they, I know you're having to put some monies. You need to, just because of the age of the building. Do you happen to know about how much maintenance and upkeep on that is, on that, on that building?
We, propane wise in the winter, which because of the trucks are parked there and stuff, it's $200 a month on propane in the winter. And then electrical bill, besides that, we do all, maintain everything else. We've had a lot of people donate some money for like, for fixes of the roof and siding and stuff like that. And we've been pretty lucky.
Is that building getting some real age on it now?
It is.
So, I don't, you don't know when you might, might be a big, well, in big pine tree goes in and then it might be bad.
I'm trying to put together right now a six-year plan, and that includes that building down there. It's not, going to be nothing drastic, but we're going to have to start thinking about, you know, replacing the roof and stuff like that.
And another benefit coming up a week from Saturday.
That's correct. Yeah, that'll be our second benefit.
You can tell them. You can, I need to say, before you write that down.
And then we've got a, we sponsor a softball tournament in August and then our chili drive-through dinner in October. So, it's not like we're trying not to waste money and stuff, and we're not. We've come up with different ways. COVID threw a curveball for us and what used to be dining in barbecue and dining in chili dinners turned into drive through the bay and pick it up and see you next year. You know, we can't talk to you and stuff like that. So, it's, I know it threw a curveball to all the volunteer departments around here.
Mr. Shields, Mr. Higgins, go ahead.
I've got a simple question.
Yes, sir.
A lot of largest trucks as well. I mean, $700 for an oil change. Do you guys change your oil? Can we take advantage of other county maintenance?
We cannot change oil ourselves. Anything we do, it has to be by certified emergency service mechanic, which that's the reason we use Carolina CAT. They have emergency service mechanics. If we were to change it ourselves and something happened to that truck and it caused somebody injury, then our insurance would not cover nothing.
That's just hard to swallow, but I just wanted to, we can't share other county maintenance?
The chiefs.
Just for routine maintenance. You know, I understand working on ladders and pumps and, you know, all the real technical.
Right. We had a chiefs meeting a couple of months ago, and that's something all the chiefs had mentioned was maybe getting somebody certified in county maintenance or getting a countywide contract with Carolina CAT or Quality Auto or something like that. And we're getting prices together. And Terry, when's the next chiefs meeting? That's when we'll have everything together and the chiefs will go from there.
Mr. Higgins?
I share your thoughts about everybody having a hard time right now. This inflation is just, I've spent today just trying to round up products for my business that I'm flabbergasted at the cost of everything. The cost of HICU have hit the other 11 departments also.
Correct.
And to have a tax increase. The thing I don't like about the way these budgets are presented or requested, it doesn't reflect your reserve funds.
Right now, in the emergency reserve fund, we have $40,000 in case anything happens to any of the trucks. If the engine goes out or something like that, we have to replace a whole engine or anything like that. And then we have a $20,000 in case anything happens to the old building or we have to buy a spare pair of chainsaw or something like that, something that we need for inspections or ISO or anything like that. So, we have a total of $60,000 in emergency reserve fund that we did not touch.
I mean, you've got the 60K in there now.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any guidance on, guidelines on what percent? I know we as a county, state recommends we keep, you know, one month's?
I, when I was handed over, took over as chief, nobody told me anything about any guidance on keeping any reserve funds. That's something that even when I was assistant chief for the prior six years, it's something that we have always kept in there and did not touch.
That's pretty good. Pretty good little fund now. You've got a 250, 230, what's your budget? 230? 235, 237, $1,000.
$236,025 was last year's budget.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Mr. Shields? Anybody else?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, chief. Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Do we want to handle these individually as we head along to give Lori some direction? Or, Mr. Manager, I'm looking for direction here.
I think we better wait just to see when we're at at the end of the day.
Okay. Good enough. There. Otto, welcome, Chief Rollator.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners. I've come before yous today to ask for a budget increase for the auto fire rescue for the sole purpose of a new main station. We've been planning this for many years since we just purchased property, drilled a well, have a set to permit on file, and had some of the grading work done, all without any budget increase. Also, in preparation, we paid off our substation trying to offset any increase to the budget. In 2002, we built an additional to the same property as what we have our main station on now, trying to increase the longevity of that building. It has fully served its purpose. We house six apparatus in the Bay areas. We also built a substation to house three more apparatus to allow us to extend our coverage and bring more structures into the insurance rated five and six mile districts. In 2003, we dropped to a class seven insurance rating. And then in 2011, we dropped to a class six. And then again, in 2020, we dropped to a class four. With these reductions, property owners save between $100 and $200 decrease on their insurance premiums annually. And we have the fourth largest district and the third highest population in Macon County. We still have areas that are not covered inside of our six mile district and are in process with Raymond County to cover some of those areas to give citizens a better insurance rate. We strive to provide the highest quality service while trying to keep costs to the taxpayers as low as possible. The national average for fire protection is between $170 to $180 per household. Our average cost before the proposed increase is $98 per structure. With the proposed increase, it would be an average of $206 a structure. The request will increase the district millage rate from a .0684 to a .1224, which is a .0544 difference. Still not the highest millage rate in the county. We would also like for you to keep in mind that Buncombe County has an average millage rate of .1274 for fire protection for the same services that Macon County fire departments provide. The Macon County average with the auto increase is .0749. In 2019, we ran 528 calls for service and then 485 in 2020. The slight reduction is due to the state COVID response protocols in which fire departments did not respond to any COVID-related calls through most of the year. With the 2020 calls, that brings our cost per call to $1,235 a call. With the increased number of calls to service, we are in dire need of a station to house our growing equipment, apparatus, and personnel. As of now, we had to purchase an outside stores building to house our command post and other portable equipment as we are out of room in our current station. Due to the outdated old section of the main station, we cannot fit most of the newer apparatus due to the 10-foot bay doors, which means we have to strategically place all of our apparatus. We have three trucks that will not fit in the building at all. Unfortunately, with the decreasing number of volunteers and the increase of truck size, this station will not serve us much longer into the future. In 2017, the Macon County Fire Protection Study, it is recommended that main stations have a 40-year lifespan. Our station was built in 1980. And also in that same study, 19% of the citizens think that they're getting a bargain on fire tax or would pay a higher tax for better service. Also had a lot of people want more career staffing at every fire department in Macon County. More issues we're facing with the current station is there are not adequate storage for equipment or supplies. Roots on both buildings leak and need attention. During heavy rainstorms, water runs into the Bay areas of both buildings causing us to relocate the equipment stored in those areas. We do not own any of the buildings on the property where the main station is located. We do hold a long-term lease on the area we occupy. Also have no area to house overnight stays, whether it be paid staff or volunteers for special related events. Neither building will meet building code to offer housing without major renovation and the addition of a sprinkler system. We do realize this is a hefty increase, and we have diligently worked to keep our budget low in previous years by the use of grants and trying to find the best equipment for the best rate possible. We also did not pay volunteers until we received a safer grant through FEMA for recruitment and retention. We've received $441,000 in grants in the last eight years. We've also made several cuts to the building plan, talked with Macon County EMS about renting space, talked to numerous banks to help us offset some of the annual payment of the building. This, this station is the future for the southern end of Macon County as it will meet the need to house fire and rescue protection for many years to come without any need of any renovation. It will be able to house up to eight firefighters overnight at any given time, be able to house all the apparatus needed in heated Bay area, and allow plenty of storage for all equipment. Also provide a workout room and proper areas for decon and sleeping quarters. In the design of the station, we planned it for the future. This decision to do this and ask for this increase did not come easy, as I'm sure yours won't either. We all live in the auto community and will affect our tax rates as well. We are looking into the possibility of building insurance companies, get a better donation program, and more grants to offset any further budget increases. We did hold two public hearings on budget increase with one person attending each one. Both parties were in favor. We did a community newsletter and had positive response for the increase. And I did bring our architect with us, Odell Thompson, for any questions on the building. Is there anything on that part that y'all would like? And I have the plans or pictures if y'all would like to see those.
How many square feet?
Under the roof, we've got 16,421 square feet.
Heated? How much heated?
Heated, let's see, 5,850 square feet are sprinkled and 2332 are unsprinkled. And then we've got 6396 truck beds.
Say that last number again, I wasn't hearing it.
6,396 square feet of truck beds, which, yeah, they'll be heated.
How many trucks do you say? How many units do you have?
How many engines? Right now, we have 11.
Chief Rollator, please help me refresh my memory. I know you've been here before, and it seems like you might have declined the tax increase.
Last year.
Was that last year?
Last year.
Okay. Because I remember seeing this prior.
The same building last year, when we come to propose it, was $3.7 million. This year it's 5.4. 5.2, increase in the building.
Terry, what happens to the old building you're in now?
We are, that's actually part of that. So, when we talk to the banks, the annual loan payment is going to be about $304,000 a year. And actually, what we're requesting right now is $265,000 a year because we're going to take and rent that old space of the building, hopefully rent it out. I know EMS is looking at it. We'll rent it to them and use that money to offset some of the building payment as well.
So, what happens to the auto community building?
It stays there, stays the same.
What about the roof that's leaking now?
It's not our building.
So, it's up to them to do all that?
They own it.
Y'all don't contribute to their insurance or nothing?
No.
On that, on that bill. You just use the bill.
We use the building and we pay a renters insurance. We did try to offer a deal to them.
The community club. You don't pay nothing to the community club.
We rent the building and we pay our part of the maintenance. We did offer a deal to them to take over the property and take over all the maintenance of the property, and they've yet to come back with an answer.
No, they can't. They have no money. They're just like everybody else. But the roof's got to be retired. Boston West is getting ready to put a lot of equipment in it.
I also talked to Boston West about renting the space in this new station for them to put their equipment.
And they got to have a roof. It can't be leaking all that stuff, I wouldn't think.
I wouldn't think so either. I wouldn't want my stuff getting drained on.
So, Boston West is going to use repurposing?
That's part of the community club. That's nothing, yeah, that's their building.
Yeah, we've been talking about it.
Chief Rollator, y'all have been skimming by with one of the lower tax rates in the county for several years. I know you were here last year for one. Do you feel like you, and I don't disagree with the fact you don't need a tax increase, do you feel like you can't, you have to go with this massive of one? I mean, that's almost a, I mean, I haven't looked at it just off the top of my head. That's almost an 80% tax, I mean, that's tremendous.
It's huge.
Can you not swing it with, I mean, I understand we declined last year, but are you going to swing it with a more minimal tax rate to swing through? Are you, are you expecting once you get this paid for, you're going to decrease your tax rate, which is?
Once this is paid for, we could take and drop it down. But I mean, that's, that's 30, 20, 30 years in the future. Once this payment's paid off, unfortunately, that is the full price, well, it's not even full price, the loan payment. We're taking our donation line item, and we're taking $15,000 out of our budget right now that we took out of it to help pay this annual payment, plus whatever we get from rent from the station we're in now to pay for that. And then we also have $100,000 set over in a building fund right now that we're going to use to offset the overall cost. So, hopefully that fee will pay the architect fees and so on and so forth. So, it'll just be the $3.2 million. As of right now, a bank will only do on a commercial building 20-year loan. We're trying to, there's, we're working with a bank. Right now, they're looking at doing a 30-year loan, which will bring that rate on down to get it to where we can manage it.
You mentioned you'd had two public comments. Did you advertise those in the paper?
Yes, sir. Both of them was advertised in the paper.
Terry, this is the property right, on the right before you, where the old welding shop was?
Yes, sir. Right there, the old welding shop, same property. It's all tied in. Yes, sir.
And you look like you got plenty of room. I know there's a big bank behind it, but you do have room for expansion?
Yes, sir.
In the future, if you, if needed, right?
Hopefully with that, there'll be no expansion needed. It's there. Because that was what we didn't want to get into, is we ran into it with our main station now, is it didn't serve its life, and we had to go and ask for an increase to do an addition. We don't want to do that halfway through this. We want it all to be there and it's ready. We have 31 members right now, three juniors and two career staff.
Good job. Any further questions, Mr. Higgins?
Oh, I appreciate you coming again. Last year, I thought it was more than three.
It's 3.7 last year. Yes, sir.
And I talked, I think your architect about scaling down some, because that's a big lick, and you know you.
I agree. It's a lot.
It, that's.
Unfortunately, from the trend from last year to this year, it ain't getting no cheaper either. So.
That runs out about, what, $337 a square foot?
Yes, sir.
354, actually.
354?
Yep. The prices last year was 225 to 250 a square foot.
I mean, you're cramped, you know, what do you do, man? It's just.
And if you look at the plan, we also moved our outside stores building down there too to help still put stuff outside and all that room too.
It's just, it's a tough call.
I don't argue that. That's why y'all make it.
You know, my stance on taxes, man, it's just, like you said, like White said, fuel going up over a dollar a gallon. And you guys have to run off of that, live off. But we do too, all of us business. But, you know, we're, we're suffering the same things. And the uncertainty with the federal tax codes coming out is just absolutely mind-boggling. And to raise just autos taxes, you know, a nickel.
And you know, and not that this makes for a hill of beans, but Highland Station was over $4 million. But with their overall district evaluation, their tax rate wasn't as high to build the same quality station.
And you'd mentioned there, you know, and I'm trying to tailor and design these things for sleeping quarters and.
Something we got to have.
Well, we've got to realize that there is no way that Macon County residents can afford 12 full-time fire departments in Macon County.
I agree. And I'm not arguing with you, but can they afford no fire protection? I've got 12 members right now that have their 20-year service, could walk out the door tonight when I get there for a fire meet. They're retired, paid and full.
How are you going to use sleeping quarters to recruit new fire?
Well, some people use what they call a community live-in program. They let people that's going to college, like these people are coming in to go into park service at SCC and so on, other classes, they let them live there rent-free to run calls.
Interesting concept. I hadn't heard that.
It's pretty big down on the eastern part of state around Charlotte, places where there's bigger schools, people come in to go to college. They let the college students live there rent-free and run calls for them.
But you agree that we could not, that residents could not afford 12 fully-staffed fire departments?
I agree, but it's something we need to look at affording because it's, it's coming. And you need to look at it pretty quick. I'd say within the next five to six years because there's no more coming through the door. You don't have volunteers come through the door. People don't have time.
Different generation, Terry. It's still the best deal this county's got.
If you, I'm not arguing. You look at the study in 2017, 70% of the people surveyed said they would not volunteer because they didn't have time.
Different time.
And that was in 2017. That was four years ago.
And there'll have to be options looked at to maintain rural fire departments. Y'all, that's an interesting concept. I've not heard that. But just to set your blanket and say, hey, we're going to have 12 full-time, full-staffed or whatever departments, that's, that's a tough lick. I mean, that may be, that may be the end game. I don't know. And I think we certainly need to discuss. But this is, this is a, there's never a good time for a tax increase in my mind. I'm not the full board, but particularly this is not a good time at all. Like Sherwood, neither. You keep hearing the same thing when you come.
We'll keep coming. We'll keep coming. You'll see my smiling face every year.
I'm impressed with you young gentlemen that are committed to serving your community. And I tried it for a few years, and I was just, I was too busy.
And see, even myself, I've been at it since 98. So, I could actually retire within the next year or two.
I'll say something. So, so I live in.
Thank you, Terry.
Yes, sir.
I live in Otto, and I do, I do appreciate more than what you guys, men and women, more than what you realize, what you do for us. It's, I don't have the time again. And you guys put your life on the line for us on the day. The number, I mean, the $5 million number is what's really intimidating. You know, like, there's no doubt, as Mr. Tate says, you need better facilities. You know, we just built that metal structure on 441.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not scared to tell you it was a couple of years ago, but we built 24 feet high. It's a fraction the size of this. We came in at 225,000. We have three rooms, two bathrooms, a mezzanine, you know. So, I just, I think we just kind of need to scale back to where maybe we don't have all the bells and whistles and all. Like, there's no doubt you need it. But, you know, I heard you reference Asheville and Highlands. Like, there's no doubt you need it, but you know, I heard you reference Asheville and Highlands. I mean, this is Otto. I'm not saying they're any, any, you know, better or worse. I'm saying we don't have the population and the funding. So I think we need something. This, this is intimidating, but-
That's actually on the lower end. We did not put a lot of bells and whistles into that. That's not your high-dollar sheet rock and so on and so forth and brick forlay like Highland stations or Asheville stations. That's actually metal building, metal frame building, red iron. And they're putting insulated panels on the outside where it's metal on the outside, insulation in between and metal on the inside, and that's what'll go up. It's not high-dollar.
Just asking, I'm not a contractor, but is there a way to kind of break this down, maybe with a breezeway where you can stay under, is it five thousand square feet? Do not have to have sprinkler system?
We did. We put in-
All crazy.
Yeah, we put in firewalls. The only area that's sprinkled is the living quarters to cut down on the cost of the sprinkler system. Part of the problem with sprinkler system is we're not tied into city water. You're required by building code, if they're sleeping there, if it's living quarters, you have to have that. So we have to put in pumps and tanks and all that to be able to accommodate that sprinkler system. Where if we did have city water or public water out there, we wouldn't have to put all that in. But we did in the bay areas, we put in firewalls where we don't have sprinkled that as part of living in a rural community.
So like I say, I'd be happy to, you know, kind of come to a meeting and talk to you guys. I just, I want to see this number. This is just, this is just, there's not much for me.
And, and like, it was three point seven last year. I can't help the cost of building increase, you know, that's, that's materials.
Have you had actual contractors look at it and give you a quote?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, what-
Recent?
Yes.
I talked to one and he said that his metal building, he sells metal buildings for a living. And he said that his cost since January went up forty-three percent just on metal buildings. He recommended, we done a twenty-five percent increase at first redo. After talking to him, he recommended we do at least another twenty to twenty-five percent because he had no clue where building material was.
Terry, I believe from the information you've got here, you all have involved your community and they seem to be in support-
Yes, sir.
-of what you're asking for here.
Out of the newsletter we sent back, there was only two negative comments for it. One was opposed because it didn't help Pearl Mulberry, where she lived at. But we have, we're looking at striking a deal with Rayburn County to get them covered where they're in a six-mile district to help them on their insurance rates.
So what I'm reading here, your community that you serve is in support of what you're presenting here?
For the most part, yes, sir, from what we've gathered back.
Thank you.
Most of it was just non-responses, but from what we got back, they were always positives. Yes, sir.
That community's getting involved, man, it's going to increase more business-wise and homes.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate all your-
Thank you.
And your leadership. And we have to be careful, just for the board and for just knowing a little bit about it, that yes, you can come in here and try to cut that bill down to X amount of dollars and say, we'll add on to it later. It's like buying a car with no fenders. You're going to put fenders on it.
That's right.
You're going to have to expand it. And it costs a whole lot more the second go-around, what's it going to cost four years from now?
Yep.
That's what you have to think about. And as this county continues to grow, and it will, that community especially. Everything, every piece of land that are sold, I reckon, pretty close. So, and peoples, and so it's going to expand, Terry, and your call volume. Look at your call volume. I looked at your call volume.
It's went tremendously.
Yeah, even during COVID. And most, most of the calls, Warren will tell you that during COVID, a lot of the calls went down.
Ours actually increased.
Yours increased. So that's what it's all about. When they, when they pick up that phone, dial nine-one-one, look, Rockville Fire Department. Have you ever had anybody say, my tax rate's too high, don't go?
No, no, sir.
Never hear a word about that.
And, and you know, with that being said too, a lot of people that move here from different locations, they expect the same level of service that they got.
Well, they got better here in the air, guaranteed.
So we still have to maintain a level of standardization service across the board that they receive anywhere.
What grade are you in, Steve?
Four.
Great.
Good job of that. Any further questions? Josh, if you'd like to catch up.
Yes, sir. So we have shared a couple of emails and-
Yes, sir.
I spoke with the gentleman at the fire department. Got your number as well, come down.
Okay. Please, sir.
Anytime you have a meeting, I'd love to be there and go through more and better and I'd be happy to bring more of the board, just kind of show the efforts that we're taking and more of the scale of that building. That's it. I, I want something, I just, and I understand it's, it's crazy what this is going on right now.
Agreed.
And thank you for what you do.
Appreciate y'all's time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Terry.
All right, I see you at Forest Service here. Would you like to? Warren, did you have any comments on these?
Um, sure.
Sorry, just one second.
The two things that y'all mentioned obviously were in that fire study, the combined maintenance contract with an outside agency or using the county maintenance staff. So that's something that we looked at in seventeen, that was the part of the steps that we were looking to try and fix. And that's something that I can mention is on our radar to try and see if we can do something with. I do agree with Terry. His building's one of the oldest ones that's out there, so that's why we had a body back then in twenty-nine, in Clark Chapel, that was two of the oldest buildings. They levered the first two rural fire departments in Macon County. So they also have the oldest buildings, so they, they hit that nail on the head. You already mentioned EMS. One of the things that we looked at was, particularly when the Highland truck was shut down with maintenance, we moved the truck down to Otto during daytime. And we did that, so when the truck in Highlands, when our ambulance in Highlands had the call, we chased it with a truck from Franklin to make sure that our availability is still there. If the next person picks up the phone, call nine-one-one. So we, we run this constant circle between Franklin and Highlands and Franklin and Anahala. And what we found was that when we moved that truck to Otto, number one, we helped Mulberry, Walloog Gap, those places down there that are, that are hard to get to. And in some cases, we drive fast, Rayburn County EMS to get to some of those places. So usually we'll send them instead of us. We'll go to, we'll send them first. So we realized that was a really good location, plus it helped us with our backup calls in Highlands. Because we could either take the load off some of the stuff and scale them out and then let Highlands stay available if we came from Otto. Or it saved us a little time to wind up that way. So that was a really good location. We were, we were doing some informal talks with them, what happens to the, what they call the new part of their building? That there's the older fire department, which is the community club that you're talking about there. Then you have the two-bay or the three-bay metal building right there. This is the newer part, the fire department actually owns. We were talking to them, what are you going to do with this building when you get done? Because that's an ideal place for us. So that's why we were trying to figure out, that way if, if they were to move out, that building is not wasted, it's repurposed. And then even if we leased it or something, that would help them offset their payment on their building. It would get us what we needed without us having to build a building, kind of spread the money out over something. But that was all in the planning process. A lot of that hinged on what happened with their new building. But right now, we can't, we can't go there twenty-four hours because they don't have sleeping quarters. We don't have the night quarters to legitimately put somebody there. We could do daytime. We have to park outside, but we could do daytime right now. So that, that was kind of part of the picture we were looking at.
Ms. Edwards, welcome. Before you start, you can, you can come on up. I'll speak to you as well, just so, you know, I think it's your first time in here in front of us with a budget, but, and I'll explain why you're, why I presume you're here. So our county manager has a set of funds from our revenues and he's got a number that he uses. And he tries to work in everything that needs to partake in Macon County, all the expenses within that number. He can't go over it because if he goes over it, that requires a tax increase, which comes back to us for it to happen. So he, his hands are tied, his neck sort of in a noose of what he can do and can't do. And he has to try and get everything that he can in for that finite amount of money to the best of his abilities. So I presume you're here because I saw on the report that y'all asked for a minimal increase in your funds. County manager recommended that he keeps it flat, which I'm sure he'll, he'll explain his reasoning after we hear from you. But I just want everybody to know, sometimes I happen, sometimes he requests a decrease. He's doing the best, best he can. But shouldn't anybody ever be upset with their, with their county manager for what he does and what he has to put up with for-
You disregard him.
He definitely doesn't ignore anybody. So thank you, Ms. Edwards, welcome.
Thank you. And I guess I wanted to start out by thanking you all for your support over the years. I know we've had a good working relationship with Macon County in the past and we look forward to that going forward as we work through budget issues and that kind of thing. I know we're not alone. We, I gave you all a printout of our proposed budget for this year. And last year, we also were held flat. And in fact, I could only go back to two thousand fourteen in our program. And we have had the same budget, one hundred and seventy-five thousand from Macon County since two thousand and fourteen. So what that's meant for us is that as our salaries increase and that kind of thing, I'm having to pull appropriations out of my operating expense to cover the salary. And I'm at a point now where I don't have any more money. I'm, I'm out. I'm tapped out. I can't. If, you know, to get to the nitty-gritty pretty quick, if I am held to a capped-out county portion of seventy thousand, I will have sixteen thousand dollars to operate my office. That includes gasoline, it includes diesel, it includes oil changes, it includes truck maintenance, it includes the light bill. And I simply cannot do that. I mean, that's thirteen hundred dollars a month. I mean, y'all know, you can't run an office on thirteen hundred dollars a month. So anyhow, I know that in the past, we have turned money back, so to speak. I think Derek and I talked about that some last year. The last sheet on the printout is our total authorized budget, our authorized salary, the salary that we spent. And if we don't spend salary, it's because we're having turnover and vacancies, and it happens. And then what's left, as we call in state budget terms, is lap salary. That lap salary goes back to Raleigh. I'm not allowed to touch that. And then I also have on here authorized non-salary, non-salaried spent and unspent operating. We did have unspent operating last year. We were given a no more spending on March first with COVID. So we were bound to, don't drive your truck, don't go anywhere unless you are responding to a fire call. So that's four months of operating that we didn't spend last year because of that. So, you know, there's other things too that Macon County doesn't get billed for. We have myself, an assistant district forester, a service forester, a district ranger FM, a district ranger, a law enforcement officer, two bulldozers, a RACO and IC thirty-five. We have three scout queens in Hickory, two helicopters. When we use those on fires in Macon County, Macon County does not get billed for those expenses. And that's because we have this arrangement and this contract. So y'all are getting a good bang for your buck. We put a helicopter on a fire in Macon County, Cal's Cove. It did a hundred bucket drops in one day. The bill on that would have been fifty thousand dollars. So.
Remind me of your, what you're requesting, what we, just save me a little bit of time.
Sure, absolutely. So and I can walk through it, line by line, if y'all would like. You don't want the details?
Give us the helicopter taken from up there.
We're asking for the county portion to be seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety. That's an increase of eight thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars from you.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I definitely agree. We do get a great, a great bang for our buck. I look back at our county appropriations and as you had mentioned, the remaining funds at the end of the year. And going back to twenty fifteen, when you look at, let's look at twenty fifteen, there was, the county appropriation was seventy thousand dollars. In that year, there was four thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars that remained unspent. In twenty sixteen, the county appropriation was seventy thousand dollars. There was eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars that remained unspent. In twenty seventeen, the budget was amended to cover infrastructure repairs to seventy-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Again, in twenty seventeen, and there was fourteen thousand, forty-six dollars remaining unspent at the end of that fiscal year. In twenty eighteen, we amended the budget to eighty-six thousand to cover a sixteen thousand dollar, our contribution on the purchase of a truck. And in twenty eighteen, in that year, there was fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars remaining unspent at the end of the fiscal year. In twenty nineteen, appropriation was again seventy thousand. There was eight thousand, eight hundred and two dollars in that year that remained unspent. And in twenty twenty, we again amended the budget from ninety-two, or to ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight. That was additional twenty-two thousand dollars to cover an additional vehicle. And at the end of that fiscal year, there was twenty-one thousand, thirteen dollars that remains, that remained unspent at the end of the fiscal year. So just in twenty fifteen through twenty twenty, there's a total of seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, or about twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars that's left on the table annually at the end of the fiscal year. So I'm just, you know, as the chairman said, it's a very tight budget. And, and you know, if there's some way that, that we can work to get some of this money cleared off the table at the, at the end of the fiscal year. But, but I can't, looking at these remaining balances at the end of each fiscal year, again, going back in the past five years, from twenty twenty to twenty fifteen, we're talking about seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. So again, if we, if there was some way that we can find-
How much is that salary?
That's just what the county gives you, that annual appropriation and then our county-
We don't track it by salary.
We don't have your, that's just what's in our accounting system.
Well, and I guess that's why I did this, as I did, the majority of the funds that we have on the books that's turned back is salary. And I can't move that to operating.
The, the county funds, all we do with this appropriation, I mean, and if there's, you know, if there's any way that if this fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, that's county money in, in, in twenty eighteen. Or the, the twenty-one thousand that was left in twenty twenty, that's county money. If there's some way we could work out to, to get those funds to you, we'd be happy to write you a check. Because when we give you that seventy thousand dollar appropriation, we intend, we intend for it to be spent by the North Carolina Forest Service.
Right. And I have, I have to cover this coming year, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand and change in, in salary. And I can't move that appropriation to operating at all. So your portion of that, I can't use for anything else. So if it gets, if it's not spent because I have a vacancy, then you're just not going to get billed for it. And it's being left on the table, yes, but I cannot move that below the line to operating.
There was two unfunded mandates come down from the state passed along to the county, passed along to North Carolina Forest Service that I'm aware of. It could have been twenty-two of them going this legislature. But there's two unfunded mandates for sure that came down, that the county, we had to go back and pick up. That's from two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
So one of them is the, is the retirement plan that comes out, but the county has to pay. State mandated, but it's up to us and your budget from the county to pay. That's number one. Number two was your insurance.
Right.
So that's all unfunded mandates. That's not reflective in the numbers that Derek shared. I'm not saying that he, I'm just saying that that needs to be taken into account.
Sure.
You're dealing with, we are dealing with unfunded mandates from the state legislature that are passed to you and you just have X amount of dollars.
Right.
And you, you have very limited of what you can do with your money. You are very, very limited.
Very.
We want to do a truck, maybe it's ten years ago, I remember-
I was going to say, do I need to tell y'all now there's going to be a truck in the budget next year, or should we hold off and wait on that? Should I go ahead and start greasing that wheel now or?
Through, through May twenty-eighth of this year, there's twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars left. We could probably go ahead and buy it.
But I mean, a lot of that, the salary money is what you're going to have, right?
I'm sorry.
The salary money. That's where the problem is.
The money is, yes, that number's dictated to me. I can't change it and I can't move that, I can't play with it if I have, if I have a vacant-
Dollars and supplement it.
Correct. I can't move, I cannot move with that stuff that's above the line and, and, and the budget. I just can't, I cannot play with it at all. So.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, do y'all have any questions? And I guess too, for perspective, the other, and I don't know if it matters or not, but Haywood Jackson County, my operating budget with them is in the fifties, fifty thousand range. So we're very underfunded in Macon County.
So you were asking for, did I hear you write eight thousand total?
Right shot that, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Going to seventy-eight thousand. What did you just say, Jackson County?
They're operating only.
What is their total contribution?
I don't know that, but I can find out, yeah. But they're a similar county. They're a three, a three-person county and, and I brought them with me. Y'all probably all know BJ Keener, he's your county ranger. Adam Robbins is the new assistant county ranger and he's- ranger, and he's joined us, he was a deputy with Caldwell County, and is now the assistant county ranger.
Lori, can, if we ever get our Pilt money, would this be a good place to earmark some of that?
Earmark for school, is it?
The Pilt money, the Pilt money's already part of our budget.
Yeah. So I mean, would that be, it's payment of the taxes for the forest service land, so, for federal lands.
Right.
And we try to get that as a line item budget in the federal, but can't get it happen. So it's, and it's, we ain't got our money this year, haven't we?
Not yet. It usually comes in June.
But if that's.
Hopefully it comes.
400 grand or something, 350?
Again, it's already built into our budget, though.
Yeah.
I mean, it's already part of the revenues we've proposed.
We can search it out of there.
I would like, and also, my, my boss, the regional forester, was not able to come today. He's down east on the severity team for their drought situation. But if you all are not going to recommend an increase in our budget, he and the state forester would like to have an opportunity to come talk to y'all about what our budget and services will be under what's, what Derek and, and you all are recommending this time.
Thank you.
Derek, that money you're talking about, the $27,000 that you guys can't use, is there, where's the money go if it's unspent?
It goes in the fund balance.
It goes into fund balance. But we already have that money budgeted for.
Yeah, it's appropriated to the forest service. Every year, we appropriate them $70,000. And since 2015, there's been about $12,162 a year that remains unspent. So.
I don't have a problem giving it to you, but give it back anyway.
I hope not. I hate my staff is stable now, thanks. That's not funny.
It would be, it would be fund balance, Ronnie, your question. I mean.
It's, it's back in fund balance.
It's gonna roll into fund balance. You could appropriate fund balance in the upcoming year for our 8490 if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Because their unspent money's just gonna roll into our fund balance.
And that's what I'm saying. If there was something like that, I mean, you know, that works out great.
Because it don't, it's really not practical to just write them a check for them, what's left on the table.
I don't think I can, I can't.
Because the way it's set up, I get an invoice each month that shows all of their expenditures, and then it bills the county for 40%. So you know, we're paying on actual expenditures. So, and the 20 something thousand dollar number that's remaining now, we still have a few months because, again, they bill, they bill in arrears, and I still have a few months to pay them. But yeah, they're definitely gonna probably be 8 to 10,000 left on the table at the end of this year.
Yeah, I think right now.
You could appropriate the fund balance in next year to cover this increase.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lori. The numbers are all through your heads. Amazing.
Any other questions? Sure, absolutely.
Have you recovered from the fires? You know, the forest service hadn't even recovered from the drought fires that we had. Has, has the forest service, the state would not allocate to replenish the funds for four years. And that's been how many years ago now? When was all the fires?
16, 2016. Yeah, we're due another, another.
The replacement funds. So, and you ain't gonna get it. That's just the way it is. So that's another reason that, that you're hurting.
Yep.
Work on that, your next trip, Ronnie.
Uh?
Thank you.
Work on that, your next trip then. All right.
Okay, well, you think you got the issue.
Anything else, the fire departments or forest service? Pretty good. All right, let's move on to school system budget discussion. Bob Baldwin, do you have questions after seeing county managers?
No, sir.
Have y'all had discussions, or are we?
Uh, have, we have.
Where do we go from here?
We had them leading up to the budget, not since then.
Oh, I didn't know if y'all had met.
Not since his recommended budget.
Okay, okay. Good. Do you have questions, thoughts? Do we have questions for you?
I'll just, if, if you got just a few minutes, I'll, I'll go over the reasons for our request.
Huge item in our budget.
Absolutely, I understand. And certainly appreciate the opportunity to present our projected needs for school year 21, 22. And as Derek pointed out during his recommended budget presentation, there are a lot of uncertainties around fiscal year 21, 22's budget. You know, we don't know where the state budget's gonna land at this point. Will there be associated salary increases for our employees? Will there be benefit increases for employees? Will be there, will there be additional teacher allotments from the state? You know, we simply don't know these things at this time. We do know that we have a significant increase in federal funding this school year that has to be spent by December of 2024. Where, there's a lot of uncertainties about how that money can be or should be spent that we've got to work through. But along with all those uncertainties, we do know that there are some certainties as well. And a lot of that is around the pandemic. We know that there are significant academic losses as a result of what this school system and every school system across the nation went through over the past 15, 16 months. And our budget request reflects those needs and how we, how we would attempt to address some of those needs. Obviously, our focus is going to be academic losses that are associated with kids not being in school, and being at home, and virtual learning, and all that goes along with that. But we also know that before we can begin to address the academic losses, we have to address the social and emotional needs that, that have been impacted by kids being away from school, parents and kids being together for 15 or 16 months, and trying to get through virtual learning with parents not being able to work, and those sorts of things. So we know that we're gonna have to work through a lot of that. And our budget request with regard to the mental health professionals goes towards addressing those needs. Both the board of education and the county commissioners have heard from our community about how important the arts are to our community. And I believe that we all agree that the arts are important. We also know, as Ronnie pointed out at, at a recent commissioners meeting, that, that, you know, NAMI understands that. And NAMI, I think, is the National Association of Mental Illness. They understand the importance of music and art in addressing mental illness and mental health needs. So our, our budget request for the art positions, music and art positions request, that reflects our understanding of how important the arts are, not only to the academic needs, but the social and emotional learning needs of students. So we know that there's a need there. It's a matter of how do we fund those positions. Our, our request also pointed out the K3 class size legislation, how that's impacted our school system since 2016, 17. Basically, what we're trying to do with that is make you aware of where additional teaching positions have gone over the past four or five years in, in Macon County schools. We've had to hire 15 additional K3 teachers as a result of that K3 class size legislation. Now, some of those have been offset by program enhancement positions from the state, but not all of them. Some of those positions have also been offset by the geographically isolated schools bill that Senator Davis and Representative Corbin were able to get passed a few years ago. But those things have impacted our budget as well. Normally, we would have used those positions to fund perhaps music and art. They've gone to K3 positions. So our budget, yes, that is obviously a huge impact to your budget. We understand that. It's a 16% increase roughly in, in what you've been providing us. We appreciate the support this commission, board of commissioners has given us over the years. It's obviously very important to our students and, and to our community. Now, do y'all have any questions for me about our budget request and move forward?
Dr. Baldwin, it's, it's difficult. It's difficult on us as commissioners because, as I mentioned earlier, we have a limited pot of money, and we're divvying it out for sheriff's department, we're divvying it out for human resources, we're divvying it out for social, we're, all these things. There's a point where it comes out. You know, we would love to fund everything, but the only way we can really do that is do a significant tax increase. And then what are we doing to the community when we do that? Yes, a lot of people, tax increase, it doesn't bother them that much. But a lot of people, a tax increase, it does bother. So I know you appreciate that.
I do.
I was chuckling up here a minute ago because, since I've been a commissioner every year, we never know what the state's gonna do. And it's the same thing every year. Y'all, y'all are walking blind. Every budget year we've been here, walking in, wondering what we're gonna do, wondering what the state's gonna do. And every year, we, we tend to make it through with what we're doing. So you mentioned that you have a, a good amount of money coming to the federal government this year. It has to be spent, like, it sounds like in three years from now, two years from now.
That's correct.
If, I understand the art positions. Is there opportunity, you said you, I heard you also say that you don't know how that money can be spent yet. Is there opportunity within your board to, for y'all to make decisions to perhaps supplement your capital expenditures, your capital issues with that, your repairs, whatever it might be, and then take some of our funds and roll them into those positions? I know you're taking a gamble for two years, three years, to pay for those new positions that you're needing. But you also have additional money coming in that you might be able to, again, I don't know how y'all do it, but to me, it seems logical. It might get you two, it might get us two to three years down the road.
I think it would be probably more appropriate for us to utilize the ESAR funding for capital projects because of, of the, the guidelines that we've been given at this point. Basically, we're, we're to follow three rules. And that is, is it allowable? Does it align with the uses outlined in law? Is it reasonable? Is it most cost effective? And is it necessary? And that part is the part that we've got to work through. Because the three things that, that are required is it must be linked to a reduction of, a prevention of, or a response to COVID-19. Now, based on some of the guidelines that we've received at this point, is that it does look, appear that we can enter into construction projects. And one of the things that we have proposed is building a sixth classroom addition at East Franklin. And we're trying to tie that into the COVID response due to the limited space at East Franklin. We've got, we've got kids that are receiving tutoring services and stairwells. Those are poorly ventilated. If we had additional space, we could reduce, hopefully reduce, the spread of COVID-19 or, or diseases similar to that. And obviously, the, East Franklin is one of the only schools, is the only elementary school in the Franklin area that doesn't have a pre-K program. And that's due to the lack of classroom space over there. So that would allow us to address some of the family needs that have been, have arisen as a result of COVID-19. So that's what we're trying to do with that. Now, unfortunately, that was kicked back. That request was denied in our first application. Now, we're gonna reapply, and we're gonna use a lot more of the evidence that we have from East Franklin that are associated with COVID-19. We're also going to upgrade technology through our ESAR allotment, or we, at least, we're hoping that we'll be able to do that. And a lot of that is pending our application process at this point.
You understand what I was mentioning there about us? Because it's just a simple stroke of the pen for us to move it from capital to operational. But the thing with that, if we do that though, is, if, if presuming you can use that, that funds for capital expenditures, is it.
So what we can.
It hamstrings us down the road.
Sure. But so.
Then we're gonna be caught hanging those, playing those operational businesses, and then you're gonna be back looking to us for capital as well.
Right.
I see it as a temporary solution.
Well, and now, and with that regard, we can also use the ESAR funding for the mental health professionals, the art positions, as long as we can meet that three-pronged requirement. And we, and we feel like that those are, based on what NAMI has said about music and art, and obviously the mental health professionals, we, we feel that those are allowable expenditures. However, and that's, that's my point, you know. Now, well, it goes away, but at the same, this is a little different than our funding that we received back in 2010, 11. You know, that, that money really didn't have a lot of guidelines associated with it. This is specific. Will those positions address a response to COVID-19? Yes, they will. That money is expected to be spent on addressing COVID-19 and its impacts. So it's an allowable expenditure, but once we go down that path, at some point, that money runs out. I doubt that anyone's gonna lose those positions at that time. And as long as everyone's on board with why we're doing that, then we feel like it's an allowable expenditure.
It never goes away. I've been, I've been noodling this for the past several weeks, and it's, it's a difficult situation. I certainly appreciate what y'all do there. Can you tell me how much y'all have in your fund balance?
Right now, it's about 1.3 million.
Okay. Good. Good. And I just go ask our commissioners, for my sanity, y'all, please respect my sanity. Let's hold off on the new school discussion. We're gonna get into that tonight, and let's hold off on that. Let's focus on y'all's budget for this year. And then we'll talk, we'll talk about the school next.
Let's talk a little bit about the, the art program and the school nurses. In this budget, it looks like, you said you, you've had to hire 15? Are you going to hire 15?
We have, we have hired 15. With, that is, that includes a projected additional four K3 positions this year. This year was the big year. This was the year that the law goes fully into effect. 21, 22 goes fully into effect. Up until this year, we've been, we've had a limit of 21. The past year was 21, previous to that, it was 22. Before that, it was a class size of 23. So it's gone down 23, 22, 21. This year, though, we cannot exceed our funding ratio, which means in kindergarten, we have to stay within 18 students per teacher, 16 first grade, and 17 for second and third. So that's, that's a drop from 21 to 18 to 16 to 17 to 17. Now, we still have, we can exceed those individual class size maximums by three, as long as the LEA allotment doesn't go over, or the LEA ratio doesn't go over the funding allotment. So it's, it's, it was a significant impact for us. Now, moving forward, we shouldn't see that dramatic of, of, of an issue year to year. We may have to hire up a teacher here or there, and we may be able to move a teacher to another position over the coming years. But the other thing that has gone along with that is originally with that K3 class size limit legislation, I don't think that the general assembly fully understood how that funding was utilized. They didn't understand that it funded music and art positions, foreign language, and PE. After they implemented the legislation and realized that, that those, that class size allotment funded those program enhancement positions, they reintroduced and reimplemented a plan for program enhancement positions. We've received 10 and a half program enhancement positions since 2016, 17. Unfortunately, we have over 15 program enhancement positions already in the, in the district that were funded out of the classroom teacher law. So it helped, it didn't, obviously, those 10 and a half positions didn't address the 15 that we had. That's why, that's where the geographically isolated schools allotment came in.
What about the school nurses? Or, you know, I, I think you're gonna have to be calling, there're gonna be more nurses, they gotta be a mental health physician. They're gonna be real busy.
Yes, they are.
They already are, real busy. So I think, when we met the other night, you'd mentioned five more, or five, I know now we have five now?
We requested six additional. That would give us one per school.
One per school. And with art, are they, how many positions did you, on the art side?
All right, so.
And do you have room for art in every school?
It's just middle school, right?
Well, we, we requested additional art positions at the elementaries, the middle school, and union. That was the four positions that we requested.
Have they got room at all those places for art?
There'll be art on a cart at Cartucia.
Art on a cart?
Yeah.
I like it.
And also, East Franklin. But the other schools do have their own. Middle school, middle school for the upcoming school year is gonna be a challenge with the renovations going on. We'll work something out with, between middle school and union, or that's at least what we hope to do.
Thank you, Bob.
Every year, same thing. I don't understand what's going on here. You really gotta, you gotta carry Angie with you so she can explain this budget process. The way I do it is, we hire, we hired Derek to negotiate with you on educational spending. We don't negotiate with teachers as we've done in the past. We don't negotiate with the school board, as has been mentioned. It's him and you. And when he brings us a proposed budget, I, I cannot. And when he brings us a proposed budget, I, I cannot, I cannot grasp this, the stuff you're talking out there. That's not my cup of tea. That's yours, Angie's, and Derek's. Initially, when we started this year's budget process, you were recommending a flat budget?
No.
Your initial budget present, your initial-
No, uh, back in February, I requested something similar to this. It, we tweaked it a little bit since then, based on the K3 class size needs that are projected for next year, based on retentions and additional students, depending on which grade level they're in. But it was pretty much similar to this.
What was the amount of that?
I don't know that we had an amount, amount associated with that at the, at that, back in February or not. I don't remember if we did or not. It was, it was pretty similar to this. The only difference was, um, we had a more clear, we, we have a more clear understanding now of the K3 class size legislation, how that's going to impact our budget. That, and that's reflected at, at the bottom of our request.
And your COVID money, how much? How much money is the educational system getting in two years on COVID related care after what is-
Over the next two years, approximately $15 million.
Yeah. How much does county get?
Sixty point five.
That's a lot of money, multiplied out across the United States. Holy cow.
Trillions.
We're in a hole, but man, money's everywhere. Arts, uh, it was, I, I don't do Facebook, but I was alerted that there'd been a, um, T-shirt brigade called together because the county manager instructed us not to field any calls for requests. Never happened. County manager doesn't dictate to us what we do or the calls we take, so I hope this misinformation gets straightened out. In a minute, tell me about the arts program. Why are we, last year, it was STEM program. I understood STEM and the importance of that. We picked that out, we funded that. This year, it's, uh, music and arts. Why don't we have music and arts in schools? I mean, we do have it in schools, right? What are we wanting to do with it?
What's that?
What are we wanting to do with that program?
Um, we want to expand that program. And some of that is not necessarily an expansion. Some of that is a result of the budget, uh, reduction that we went through as a result of the recession. We lost positions at Macon Middle School that were never filled, and that's where some of the request is coming from. Additionally, COVID has created a situation where music and art can fill in that, that mental health gap, as well as provide significant, um, improvements and enhancements to the academic program that we have.
Oh, absolutely. I'm a strong supporter of it. Is that not an operational function? Funding that program, staffing that program?
Of the state? But the state won't do it.
This, the way the state funds program enhancement at this point, and that, that has shifted since around 2016. Prior to 2016, 17, when the class size limit, uh, legislation was enacted, music and art was expected to come out of our classroom teacher allotment. Now, back in the 90s, there was a program enhancement allotment. Then they shifted all of that funding to the classroom teacher allotment, and school systems were expected to fund music, art, PE, and foreign language out of that classroom teacher allotment. Now, uh, over the years, we offer, uh, music and art at the elementaries. Uh, we offer, we offered music and art at the middle school. When we went through the budget reductions as a result of the recession, we had to attrit positions. And that depended on whether or not we had a PE position at MBI that, that left as a result of receiving another job offer, or a retirement, or resignation for any other reason. We might have attrited a position at that school based on that being a non-core subject, such as PE. Middle school, it happened to be art at that time. I know Scotty Corbin was there for a period of time. So, it, it depended on whatever position, as long as it was non-core. We tried to hold on to all of our core positions, math, science, reading, language arts, that sort of thing. We lost the art position at, at middle school, and we've never been able to find, find the funding for that. Some of that is a result of the K3 class size legislation. Most of our positions have gone into the K3 classes since at least 17.
It's still the state's responsibility, though, isn't it, to staff that?
It depends on how you want to look at it. You know, uh, constitutionally, state constitution reads that the state will provide for the operation of schools. Then the lottery funds is given to us to provide for capital needs. Some school systems fund considerably more in operations, some counties fund considerably more in operations than others do. So, it, it depends on how, how you want to look at it.
It's a crap shoot.
Yep, pretty much.
Let Angie figure out how to use that COVID money. Just a brief thing on school, on, we've talked about school expansions here, and you've mentioned tonight a couple of thing, a couple of locations that need some expansion. Is that on paper, you're, we've, we've talked about school plans. Is there a plan for what the educational system of Macon County wants to do over the next five or 10 years?
We, we are required by law to submit a plan to the DPI every five years, a long-range plan. We also submit that, it's required that we submit to county manager. So, yes, we have a-
Can we get a copy of that? Can I get a copy of that?
I don't have it with me, but yes.
Derek, get a copy of it. I mean, because right now, the only debt that Macon County taxpayers have is school debt. We're about $32 million now of school debt. Zero general fund, general operations debt, and we're-
Well, let me ask you something about that. You know, Parker Meadows was a pretty substantial investment from Macon County, right?
Yes.
You paid that off pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Why not school debt? I mean, you made a choice there to go with Parker Meadows over school debt.
I would not-
Three of us had that choice. Not, not the whole board.
So, but what I'm saying there is that some of that's a choice.
Yeah, it was minimal, $2 million. How do you, yeah, but $32 million is just hard to cough up overnight.
It, it is hard to cough up overnight.
And we messed up on Parker Meadows. I think we were getting-
But, but my, I guess my point is this. Do, do you receive any dollars that must go to school construction?
Uh, the lottery money?
And part of the sales taxes.
Which are all the way up to 21% now.
And, and the pilt, I think $300, something like that, here, yeah.
Article 40 and 42?
I don't see, I'm not into, I'm a debt stinger. I'm not into that.
Well-
A certain percentage of our sales tax has to be for school debt service related to buildings or the buildings.
And it is, it's flat, right?
Yeah.
Sure.
Definitely. And the lottery funds, yeah, those two sources of revenue go help to, you know, pay some-
And the lottery funds have never exceeded, they're the highest they've ever been in not, I said these 20-point something percent. Supposed to be in 40 from the get-go.
Yeah.
Those help.
Which would increase that to about $600,000.
Yes. We get about half what we should from lottery funds.
Those help. But we couldn't, we couldn't come up with $15, $12, $15 million and go over and redo the-
No.
Make a middle school.
No.
So, we have to, we have to straighten out our debt schedule.
Understand that.
And we just can't pay it off. And now, we're, we're going to get into another discussion later, about, but, so I'm just, I'm just wanting to see this plan, what are, what is our, what is our structural brick and mortar plan?
So, I, based on memory, I can tell you that, that plan that we were, that we most recently submitted included six classrooms at Cartucia J, six classrooms at East Franklin.
All I'm asking for is a copy of that.
Yeah. And, and also, Macon Middle Schools renovations and Franklin High School.
Yeah, just, if I can just get a copy, I don't care where I get it, who it's from.
Yeah.
It's where you read it. I can't understand all of it.
Well, give me your email address. I'll send it to you tonight. Give me your email, I'll send it to you first thing in the morning.
Dr. Ball, you think you have the ability to, if this is funded, to fill those positions? I mean, DSS-
That's, that's a question.
I mean, DSS is sure-
That's a question that I, I think that that's going to be one of our biggest challenges. And I think that's across the board, though. Uh, Western Carolina University graduated one language arts teacher and two math, or two language arts and one math, something like that. So, we're going to be in a human resources battle, because all of these counties have this federal money, all these school systems have this federal money, and they're going to be going after the same people.
What a lot of them are afraid to want to do is like we made a mistake one time and put it in reoccurring expense. Can't do that. It'll, it'll kind of, that's part of what's going back, still back.
But the, the part- Part of the problem with this ESSR funding too, though, is if you're going to address the academic losses that are associated with COVID-19, how do you do that without hiring people? I mean, there, if you do it any other way, you're wasting money. Now, we're going to spend a lot of money on, on staff development for our folks, but-
Do you know, Dr. Ball, if you, during the pandemic and the virtual stitching and kids not coming back, have you, have we lost ADM money? Do we know yet?
Based on what our projected allotment is for next year, and it's, it's a little bit, you have to kind of read into it. For instance, last year, we received eight positions for program enhancement, total. This year, we're receiving 10.5, but our overall allotment is only going up one position. So, it's hard to say if they have reduced our, uh, our OO1 numbers based on our ADM decreases, and it looks like we have lost kids due to COVID-19. I don't think we've lost it to the extent that other systems have. Fortunately for us, though, the state is not looking at, um, 2021 to base our funding allotment on, uh, for 2122. They're looking back at 1920. So, we'll see how that all plays out with the number of folks that have purchased property in Macon County. I suspect that our numbers will go up next year. Now, will we have the, will we have the teachers in place to, to, uh, to apply towards those numbers? We won't know until somewhere around September the 1st.
Dr. Ball, and I agree with Paul on this, that, I don't do Facebook, but I've got it sent to me 28 times today by people from one of your employees. I don't know who it is. Don't say.
Tell you someone by voice.
It basically says, uh, the meeting starts at 4:00 PM. The county manager's recommended the commissioners ignore any request for additional positions, and it goes on. I don't, it don't say who wrote it. It just says, Ronnie, please read, Ronnie, please read, uh, 28 times. So, if you're encouraging your employees, that don't help. If they don't know what Derek is doing-
Mr. Beal, if I'm a, as a non-employee making my-
That was what?
I wrote that.
You wrote it?
I wrote that, and I really quick, um, within the hour, I realized my mistake. And I did edit that, and I apologize for that, but I was not Dr. Ball.
I didn't, I got any diversion, because my phone's right off the hook. I'm just saying, your employees need to be careful, Dr. Ball, because it really affects how we look at things sometimes, it, and what Derek's job really is. His job is not to ignore.
That was my mistake.
Uh, I understand, and I don't think that our employees did that. If they do, let me know.
Are you, are you a school employee?
No, sir.
I didn't know. I figured it was a gentleman.
Uh, one, one other question. This is way off, way off the wall. Appreciate you coming. I appreciate you negotiating with, with Derek. Your knowledge, you and Angie's knowledge, that the school system financing is way above anybody sitting up here. So-
Well, it's-
We're just doing the dance more or less tonight. I have to look for Derek, for guidance on school funding. I appreciate your input and your, your availability, and certainly Angie's too.
And I, I feel same way about this board.
And, and we may pick at each other a little bit, but overall, we, we know what the end product has to be. How we get there, I don't know. The state, you know, it's, 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 every year, it's, it's a dance. Critical race theory. Has that thing even come close to Macon County yet?
Um, you know, I'm, the only thing that I've, I've heard much about critical race theory, um, I know that some-
About what?
Critical race theory.
Gotcha.
Some of our, uh, my colleagues, uh, there have been some protests at board meetings and that sort of thing. You know, I, I don't even know where it's at in the state curriculum right now as far as consideration. It's not something that, that we're overly concerned about, um, at this point, at least in Macon County. John, you may know more about it, being a social studies teacher than I do.
I don't know of a single teacher in North Carolina public schools that teaches critical race theory. Do we teach the impacts of, of racism in the United States, from Bacon's Rebellion to slavery, to convict labor, to keeping people of color from fighting in combat units of World War I? Segregated units of World War II? Jim Crow, segregated schools, mass incarceration? Yeah, we, we, we do teach that.
It's part of history, right?
Say again?
It's part of history.
It's all part, that's, that's exactly right. It's part of-
We don't erase history, we learn from it. That's just a question I have, Nicole.
Sure.
There's some crazy stuff.
You know, I know it's come up in surrounding districts. I think Chairman Bree Love had, had received an email questioning what our position is. You know, um, we follow the state curriculum. We don't add to or take away from that a great deal.
Okay, just, I just, off the wall, as, as a word out there. Thank you again.
Say some things.
Boy, I'm glad I, I'm last.
I probably have more ties to this Macon County school system than anybody in this room, and so it's important to be able to vote without emotions. And talking about what Mr. Beal and Mr. Higgin touched on with the, I would say, contracts, but more or less the contracts we have in North Carolina and how the state funds the operational, and the county funds the brick and mortar. So, if you said we're after a 16% increase, $10.6 million is what the county already provides. Can you imagine what kind of capital we would have in our community if, if we had $10 million a year to go to these buildings and structures? And, I mean, the high school wouldn't even be an issue, the middle school, we'd, we'd have brand new schools everywhere you look. So, at some point in time, I have to stop and say, I gotta keep my eyes on the prize. We just talked about the high school, and with regards to Mr. Taylor, I'm not going to go there, but, like, you know, I don't want to see something break their leg on that track. I want to kind of focus on the, on the contract and what we're supposed to provide to this community. And that's kind of where I'm going. At some point in time, Mr. Beal said it in the last meeting, we, we don't tell the school board where they spend their money. There's $10.6 million of county funds going to the school board, and, you know, it's, it's, I know the STEM, I know there's a, an outdoor program at the middle school, there's a lot of different really cool programs, but I think it's up to the county and the community and the school board to kind of, you know, help kind of, you know?
Decide what you want to fund.
You know what I mean?
You decide what you want to fund.
Like, I want to focus on capital. I'm okay, it's okay with me to spend my money when I see something, when I see something nice, and especially when we abide by the state contract. And I just feel like if we just keep, and keep, and keep going, we're never going to have a school, these schools are going to keep on flopping, they're going to be 80 years old, and we're going to keep putting, you know, money into the same schools, and, maybe it's just me, I'm glad there's five commissioners, but I want to see something nice with the capital expenses that we're supposed to provide. That's kind of why I stay on.
Any further questions? It all came back to the number of students in the classroom. So, it came back to that historically. If that piece had never been bothered, it would be in this situation. We have our arts and music, and like, yeah.
But traditionally, you, you've been in education long enough to know that something changes every year with, with that, with how we're funded and what we're expected to do with what we're funded, the amounts that we're funded to end.
Right. And they gave us, uh, I want to say a little, a preview about three or four years ago, where we wouldn't have, where we could keep, uh, music, art, and PE and stuff like that. But with music, it's going to come to an end, because they told us it's going to come to an end. The end is here. And it'd be nice to get a call from somebody saying, we're going to give you three more years in this situation. But, but the end is here. And now, we got to deal with it.
Well, and we also, we know that we're going to have to deal with crises. We had the recession back in 2010, we've had the pandemic now. There will be something else in four or five years that we'll have to deal with. There will be something else in four or five years that we'll have to deal with. I mean, we don't know how that's going to affect schools then.
I think you mentioned a while ago, qualified manpower is going to be the...
It'll be a huge challenge.
We're going to have. You and I talked about it two years ago, teacher assistance. You go out here and try to find 39 or 40 teacher assistants? That's what we needed in our classrooms to work the year.
Yeah, they're required to have a certain number of hours, college credit hours, and McDonald's is offering a $500 signing bonus? We interrupt.
Good point.
At the schools, universities, students are not going in this arena, in the educational arena anymore. You mentioned that there a while ago. Also, there was another video I saw two days ago, and I've got it here somewhere, is that... It's not so much... I went on the theory there for a while, and I'm about to change my mind, that it's more than just one theory, that you can't pay people not to work. And I held on to that till I saw that video the other day. And it's our population, the workforce population is decreasing. You've got people like me, older like me, that are retiring, and that void is not being replaced by verse.
No.
And when I looked at that the other day, and it had a number of things that was affecting this job market, I have just one of them.
Yeah, and you've got cars that can drive themselves now, too.
Right.
They still flying in our planes?
What's that?
They still flying in our planes?
They're working on it.
Josh has got in that for Mr. Shields.
We've got people in Las Vegas flying airplanes that are bombing in Afghanistan.
That's the job I want.
Thank you, Chris. Oh, now, just to say, Dr. Baldwin, we appreciate what you do for Macon County very much, and please don't leave, because we're going to, I think we've got a couple more topics to talk about regarding our budget, and then we're going to circle back on the high school.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Hang out for just a minute. Thank you.
Josh, appreciate you.
I must have thrown the agenda.
It's under item number three. Y'all please silence yourselves, please. It's under item number three. Budget discussions as needed. Anything else?
What did you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what did you say?
Any other budget discussions as needed. I'm following the agenda as Paul said.
Get your list there. The high school you said you was going to talk about.
Any questions y'all got? I want to talk about the high school after we get out of the budget.
Was anybody else?
Yeah, here, got anything before we... I was asking, y'all, that was it? Go ahead, for whatever.
A few things that I have is that, as Lee's on to, that we'd like to talk to county manager about. One was the increase in the library budget. I know we pay a lot through Fontana Regional Library for our library service. We do have three libraries. We've not, to best of my knowledge, we gave them a $20,000 increase, I believe it was eight years ago. They've asked for a $53,000 increase this year. Going back and looking and doing my own style of math, I do think a $30,000 increase is warranted. We do have to pay, they use that budget for, we already pay a million one, Derek? That's just not counting. We also pay for all the utilities, overhead. But this is for basically for the employees to have, for their insurance and raise, which they are not county employees, but I'd like for the board to take that into consideration. And...
Ronnie, I'm sorry. What was you, are you recommending the full funding or just...
30,000.
30,000 above current budget?
I don't know, I'll take the math on that.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure I had my notes correct.
Also, we're going to have to have a discussion. Derek, do you have any more knowledge on the pay study? The scale?
Gallagher.
Whatever that is.
What we presented at the budget meeting, again, at 6%, is about what we have reserved, and with the revenue parameters that were put in place and funding everything the best we could, that was the revenue that was available, and so we were...
But it's adding up.
And earmarked it. The preliminary recommendation from Gallagher, right now is at 7% to 9%. Average, and that is average. That is not, that does not mean that upon implementation, when I say 6% average, that doesn't mean that everybody in the county gets a 6%. Or when Gallagher says 7% to 9%, they're saying, on average, our positions are 7% to 9% below market value. So, what we have earmarked and set aside is 6%. And I want to harp...
You're hedging, Derek. You say enough money in there for the raises for everybody as we talked about.
I think, I mean, I will make, we will make it work. I mean, Jackson County right now, for instance, they, a very similar county, we compare to them in a lot of things. They're appropriating, I was reading their budget message, they're doing a pay study in this budget year, and they're earmarking a million dollars. Swain County is also conducting a pay study this year, but again, that's not a comparable county. But the revenue parameters we were given, as the chairman's alluded to, was to get this budget balanced without a tax increase, and that's what we've done. And with that being said, that, we will use the money, 1.23 million that's earmarked, to address the critical areas in the pay scale that need addressing, and I think that, that we can make that work.
So, is that a yes? There's enough money in there to do what you need to do? Now's the time.
The study's done. I mean, you know, it's just a, it's a reserve fund. And you don't have to spend it all.
And I think, I think we, as that study progresses, we'll be able to...
When's the last time you talked to them?
We talk to them every week, Wednesday. Right now, we've made some revisions to the last document they sent us. We went through what they sent us. We had collected our own internal data. We've been collecting it for 10 months prior to contracting with Gallagher. And so, we went through and seen what they're recommending on their benchmark positions and seen what we had internally and where there were discrepancies of 5% greater or 5% less. We've noted all those, and Gallagher's right now working on it. We'll meet next week to see. There was about 14 out of the 40 positions that we matched up that were plus or minus that 5% that could really impact that study and what the results are. So, we're still fine-tuning it.
But I just know, we've sat here through four of these things, and it's never been funded. So, if we're going to do another, let's see if we've got enough money to fund it. That's one thing. And the last thing, Mr. Chairman, is we still need to talk about the library in Nana Hala. We've got to make some decisions over there. Either it's down to two things. Either we tear down the existing structures and appropriate the money for a new building where it is now, or we make provisions. They will not be moving to the new building. So, I don't know where we stand with that. So, that's, that may be a discussion for a later time, but if we're going to appropriate money in a budget, now's the time for that. N'Quasi recommended, and we can, I think that money, Derek, can come from the Economic Development Fund if we need to, and I don't have to have a change in the budget. That $25,000, remember that?
I wouldn't recommend that, just because we've hit it so hard with the broadband project, which was $580,000, and then the reopening Macon fund last year was what, 2?
220.
220. So, you've hit that fund pretty hard. It's reserves are very low.
That's a very minimal investment of what N'Quasi's doing.
What was the amount, Ronnie?
$25,000. And we're going to have to have, just because we're not going to have no water at all. We need, ask for appropriation of $10,000 for a new well at Cali School. We're going to have to do it. We won't have no choice. That's a county-owned building. And we keep getting letters, and because it's a public, just like any other of our other public buildings. So, I believe, Mr. Chairman, other than the high school, I think we're in pretty good shape.
That's the cheapest you've let us off in a long time, Ronnie.
That's what?
That's the cheapest you've let us off in a long time.
Oh, I ain't done yet. We ain't done. That's just the first gig, though, Paul. We've got to watch what's going on in Washington. We make that $400,000 a year, buddy. We're going to get it hard, so just be careful.
Commissioner Shields, any questions on the budget?
None pertaining to those topics.
Anything new that you want to add for discussion tonight, besides the high school?
No, that's it.
Mr. Young?
I've got a couple. A couple of my questions, Mr. Sheriff, would go to you, and maybe some of the courthouse security. Do you have an update with, you know, with, I walk through that metal detector every other, every month, and I've... It's never been, never been functional.
Yeah, it actually hasn't, and the reason for that is because we're having a hard time getting employees, basically because of the pay and issues that are going on. As you probably know, we have 13 or 14 positions that are open right now. Four of those positions are courthouse and security that you all will remember giving us, and we still have those four positions that are available that we have to fill. And that's, that's the reason. You can't have somebody manning those equipment, and then you can't have somebody there and in the courtroom at the same time, and that's the issue that we have.
Let me ask you about, you have how many open employees? 13?
13. I believe it's 13. It might be 14 now.
Like, let me ask, I mean, I'm shooting, pardon me for my inexperience, okay, but shooting from the hip here. It seems like, realistically, we're not going to fill 14 positions. It's been open for some time now. Is there any way we can maybe take six of those positions, seven of those positions, and take their salaries and maybe redistribute to our other loyal employees and kind of maybe...
You absolutely could.
Maybe up some of those positions and say, hey, look, thanks for staying with us, because I know they could go anywhere else and make more money.
You absolutely could, and what you'll do is you'll eliminate services to the citizens of Macon County.
Well, right now...
We already don't have enough people to fill shifts. We already don't have enough people on manpower. And when you start eliminating positions that we have fought very hard for the last 18 years to increase, and thank goodness that the commissioners were able to do that for us at different times, never in my 30-year career with the sheriff's office have I had so much difficulty in filling positions. And that's because, like right now, you have a BLET class, Basic Law Enforcement Training Class. I think you have four people that's left in that class to graduate, and they're not even finished yet. So, you'll be lucky if you have two or three people in that graduating class. And if I eliminate positions, those are positions that I will never get back, Mr. Young, I can guarantee you, because for me to get a position takes an act of Congress nearly with the county commissioners. And that's because you all are very tight with the funds, and that's what your job is to do. So, I have to really work hard to be able to show the stats. Our school resource officers, the only reason that we have school resource officers in our school system is because we've eliminated positions within our agency. We have received a couple of grants in order, through the years, to be able to get those positions. But we've actually have eliminated positions. We've had officers that have retired, and instead of replacing those officers, we have taken those officers and put them into the schools to create the SRO position. So, all that to say, you're absolutely right. We could, we could take those vacant positions that you say that we probably could never fill. I have a feeling that once the pay study gets completed, we'll have an easier time of getting them. The only reason that we have so many vacancies is because our county is losing people that we've invested six and 10, 15 years into, and they're going to agencies within our own county making $6,000 to $8,000 more a year.
That's, that's why I make my recommendations. So, my question, I guess, if we're losing services, are those services currently being provided? If we have 13 vacant positions, by no means do I want to cut the budget. I just want to up the scale again and say, look, like, you know, it's the same thing in my industry. You know, I've never paid a tree climber more money than what I'm paying right now. It's unbelievable. I'm sure everybody else, so I just...
What happens is, you're not, the services that we're doing our best to provide, we're still providing those services minus 14 people. Because what's happening is, and I know some of you have made issues out of my overtime, understandably. I should be asked about that. Well, the reason we have so much overtime is when we have positions on the road that are vacant, that we don't have people in, then somebody who's already worked their 86 hours in this pay period has to come in and work another 12-hour shift, or a 36-hour shift, or not shift, but 36 hours after they've already worked 46 hours this week. And so, they fill in on those vacancies. The place that we don't have that a whole lot of is courthouse security. We have part-time people that come in and help with our courthouse security, the filling courts, because, you know, we used to have, you know, one court or maybe even two courts in a week. Now, we're having, at times, we're having three courts four days a week, or three courts five days a week in the three different courtrooms. Well, you can't have people in, on the metal detector, you've got to have two. You can't have two people there, and then also your man, your people up in the courtroom. You cannot adequately have one officer in a courtroom with about 500 people, 500 people that are at court for a reason. I know some of them are probably innocent, but most of them are. And you've got one person that's in there responsible for the protection of all your court personnel. Makes it really difficult.
I just know, in today's time, it's tough to be in law enforcement. You know, I appreciate what they do, and by no means... It's, I mean, I see your pain. I'm just trying to, I'd hate to see you next month, and you say I'm down. I'm down 17 people. I don't, I don't know what I'm...
If I could, if I, if I had a magic wand, I'd fix the pay. I've already told the manager. He probably verified for you. I don't care what you take out of my budget. You can take my pants. You can take my cars. You can take my shoes. You can take my patrol cars. I don't care. You need to pay my officers more money, and my officers are not the only ones. It's all over the state of North Carolina. And it's not a priority for most counties. It's just not. And it's, I'm passionate about it. You know, I don't make no bones about it. I think I fought really hard for 18 years as the sheriff. I couldn't fight for that before that, because I wasn't the sheriff. But I'm, I'm really hoping that this pay study, we, I'm like Ronnie Beal said a few minutes ago. I was bragging on him the other day to my people, what he said in the last meeting you had. We've done this four times. There's so many people in our county who are, that work for the county, who are disgusted that we're doing a pay study. And the reason for that is because every time we do a pay study, we never follow it through. You guys are being as tight as you can. That's your job. But when it comes down to it in the end, it ends up being so tight that we don't even fix the pay for everybody. We just put a Band-Aid on it. You know, my chief deputy just retired after 30 years with this agency, and was, you know, it's a shame of what he was making. And there's so many people that are saying, we lost two SROs. We have now, and I'm kind of, I hate to even say this because of the media in here, but we have four schools that didn't even, don't even have officers. We should be extremely proud that our county has an officer in every single one of our schools. But we have four, excuse me.
In grateful.
Oh, absolutely. And, and we have that because of the support of our commissioners and the support of our school. But here's the problem. Those four people, two of those people, we invested six and seven years in those officers. And these are not rookie officers. I cannot hire somebody straight out of BLET and put them in a school. You do not want a rookie officer in the school system. But you, we've got six and seven years invested in these two officers that left, and they left for an agency within our own county making $7,000, $6,000 more a year. So, you might as well take from that money that we put, invested him and trained him, and picked up the garbage can and thrown it in it, because that's exactly what we just wasted.
So, my last point.
Sorry.
No.
But I'm passionate about it.
Yeah, look, I appreciate that. So, I guess, and I clarify this with Derek, but the funds that you don't use on these salaries, they go back into the fund balance. Am I right in that, Derek?
They roll into fund balance at year-end, but in the very next year, with the new budget, they'll be appropriated into...
The new budget.
Into the new budget, yeah.
So, like, my point on the, on the, looking at this chart with the fund balance, LGC recommends 8%, I'm sorry, the minimum is 8% fund balance. We have 51%. But to me, Mr. Tate, it seems like, you know, we have eight or 10 weeks of vacation, and we're not using it.
I've got wrong thinking that. I know it's nice to have, you know, a nice surplus.
We have, we have a county, we said it's 25%.
25% of the commissioners before, none of us, as I said, had limited that we were not below 25%. Without a vote of this commission board, change that. 8% is the, is the minimum now, and that's about to change. That's about to go to 15% to 8%.
They'll start setting the levels.
But we're at 25% in Macon County.
Well, that's the minimum, but right now, we're at 51%.
But only, we can only use, we have to, 25% has to be remaining in the fund balance. It can't go below that.
So, what I'm saying is, it's a testament to the county manager for being on target with all of the budgets.
And it took years to do that, though.
It has to. So, it's not saying anything bad about it. I'm just saying, it's nice to have this thing, but at some point in time, it is.
Well, there's, Josh, there's also tremendous financial value to that. It's like our bonds that we just went through. If we were setting 25% versus 50%, we'd have probably been setting 2.5% versus, what is it, 1.9?
A lot of intercept, a lot of burden.
There's advantages to that. It's a deep topic.
Absolutely. Pardon my inexperience, but thank you for your time.
No, 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 no. We'd like the question being asked, but I want to...
I promise to be transparent, Derek.
We want to be transparent on this board, on everything. If you've got questions, we want you to ask it. If you've got questions, we want you to ask it.
Yeah, because the sheriff standing here, I've had the opportunity to be liaison for a lot of years, and me and Robbie and I, and his former chief deputy, who's, uh, Andy Shields, has served this county tremendously, over third, over thirty. Uh, but to be what this, most people in this room, and especially this county, have no idea what this sheriff department does. They, they really don't, Sheriff, and, and to be that short on people, and I don't know what the answer is, I do thank God, it's when you put on a bulletproof vest, you're a different category. Uh, than a cotton or heifer that I look for, or a, a Joshua's tree climber. You are a bulletproof vest worker, you're in a different category.
I was asked this morning, Facebook is used a lot, we use Facebook a lot, and somebody asked me, why, why don't you put advertise on Facebook like some of these other counties are doing, without positions available? And I'll be honest with you, I'm embarrassed to, I'm embarrassed to try to put some information out there and encourage somebody to come, because the first thing that they ask is how much you pay an hour. And you don't go into law enforcement for the money, there's no doubt about it. But it's embarrassing when you see McDonald's and Arby's and all these other places advertising at a higher rate than what you're paying. And I just, I, that's why I don't do it. I'm, and I'm just brand-
Hopefully it'll be solid here real soon, so, yeah.
KFC's got a real sign.
Get a Republican back in there.
A good question, don't, don't, don't make it-
No, I'm, I'm ready to go on to, uh, school.
Okay.
Thank you, Derek, Lori, the team, put this budget together.
A few minutes, bro.
It'll be a good one if we don't fiddle with it too much.
Go ahead.
Everybody want to recess, everybody want to recess?
Two, three minutes.
Not really.
Not really.
That's wrong.
Okay, go ahead, Derek, can you tell us what, um, this offhand, what, um, you put in contingency for this year?
Hundred.
Hundred thousand, okay. I just looked back through it there real quick, and I didn't see it, but, what's it under?
Non-departmental.
Non-departmental, okay, yeah.
Page thirty-nine.
They're only three months.
Hundred thousand.
Right now, just to, to recap, and, and if we could, all these things like that, that everyone's mentioned, if we could, uh-
We need to know, I've got a note, sir, I've got Burnington, I've got Alto, I've got the Forest Service, I've got schools, I've got the library, I've got Nacquasi, and I've got the Cowie School, I think that's what I, that's what we mentioned.
That, that matches up.
Yeah, that's what I've got as well.
We're gonna vote on them as a one?
I think one at a time.
I think we need to get through each one, one at a time, and it, what it does is gives Lori direction for putting her-
Putting the final budget ordinance together.
Final budget together, yeah, that's correct. And we ran into it last year, I think we had two budgets.
Yeah, because of the reopening Macon Fund.
That's right.
Don't have that, that's your thing, I'll-
So what do we do, we vote on those tonight, when do we get to final budget?
Well, what will happen is if, if y'all don't want to have another work session, if you're gonna be ready to approve it Tuesday night, you know, Tuesday night, I'll bring you your budget ordinance, I mean, I'll try to get it to you in email before then, but the only thing that will, the budget product won't change, except for anything that y'all say to put into it, you know, means of, that final budget ordinance would be presented Tuesday night.
All right. And I don't, Derek, I truly appreciate what y'all are putting in this thing, that's, that's, notebook is a pile of work, that line item. And I don't feel worthy to come up here at night and, and, and nitpick this thing and change through three line items. It, it's just, I, I just think that's kind of a slap in your face, but, uh, I'm good with the budget. You did what we asked you to do, don't, no tax increase, stay within this number, you've done it, and you've done it. I appreciate it, and I'm not gonna fiddle with it, there's things in that I don't like, but, uh, appreciate what y'all do as a team.
Well, what about Commissioner Beal to get back, but, um, my recommendation is, is that we take each fire department separately, uh, because they're really not part, they're part of our budget, but they're not part of our-
Piggy bank.
We're trying to work out a, uh, of our, so, I, I think we work through those separately, and then we'll talk about, uh, the others, because, uh, a good, quite a good example is, is the Forest Service, since they're asking for basically eighty-five hundred more dollars. Seems like a no-brainer, we give it to them, okay, so where do we take that from? Do we go ahead and pull it out of contingency, do we take it from, my pay, I, I don't know?
Yeah, that would be zero.
What was your recommendation, that, that blindsided me, I didn't know anything about the fire department, I mean, the, uh, Forest Service. What was your recommendation on that?
I would, first, I would like to say that, you know, I think that it's just a, a, a state agency like that, it, it is a shame that they can't have the autonomy to function within their budget. In other words, if they have lap salary-
It's the truth.
That they can't function within their budget to meet the needs of the community, that, that it, that it's that hamstrung at the state. That, to me, that is a gross, and it's not their fault, it's example of inefficiency at the state level. But, with the money, with the money left on the table, uh, you know, I, it's like when you're going through the budget process, and, you know, your child asking for ten dollars to go to the school for lunch money, she's bringing you home five every day, and then she starts asking for twenty, you know, uh, you know, that, that's what I draw it back to. But if they can't, if they can't function, if they can't move that money around, um, out there, then like Lori said, that, that we can, there's a way to skin that cat. This money that we have left over each year, like I said, twenty fifteen, there was forty-six hundred, twenty sixteen, eighty-nine hundred, twenty seventeen, fourteen thousand, twenty eighteen, fifteen thousand. There's thirty thousand left in there this year, granted, it's some of it's paid in arrears. But, the eighty-four hundred is what, what they're asking for, uh, addition, and I think that's right, then I would recommend appropriating it from fund balance, because you're just basically giving them their money that rolled into fund balance back into their budget. So, that, and-
Or a shell game.
A conversation, a conversation.
Go down your left pocket, put your right pocket.
A conversation with the state as to why that they can't have more flexibility within their, their contract with the state. Because they do, like, uh, as they were saying tonight, they provide us an excellent service.
Oh, absolutely.
Those folks do a great job, and, you know, it's not that weird that, that we're trying to keep anything of the money that we're appropriating to them from them. We, we want to give it to them, so, uh, you know, there, there's more than one way to do that, and if the board is so inclined, then we would be happy, I mean, to appropriate, because there's a ninety-nine point nine percent chance that they're gonna roll more money than the eighty-four ninety that they're requesting into fund balance. So, really, it's, it's a shell game, as the chairman said, so, uh, I, we're not out nothing, doing that out of fund balance.
So, is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Raise your hand, so I can see it there. All right, so Forest Service, uh, next item's the library. I don't disagree with Commissioner Beal's point of the fact that, since I've been on the, since I've been a commissioner, I, I don't think we've given the library an increase at all, in the ten years, and expenses go up, this, that, and the other. So I understand where they're coming from, I also understand that, I always get in trouble every time I say this from somebody on the library board, that we spend more per person in Macon County for the libraries than the surrounding counties, the financial regional library system, according to the stats that I've been getting. Uh, the question is, is, from my perspective, is, yeah, I would love to give them the, the funds, I know it would be spent to good use, but where do we come up with them? How do you handle that, because that's, that's not a one-time expense, that's recurring.
Well, the difference between us and the other counties, you know, around us, Jackson and Swain, is we have three libraries. They don't. Uh, we have three libraries to staff, uh, and, uh, if it wasn't for some good donations from Highlands, uh, you know, it would be even more. Uh, and they have to staff them, and, and it's just like everywhere else, their pay rate is way below what KFC and that bonus is, is paying, and these are good people that greet a lot of, uh, a library is still important to a community, very important. And we've got good folks that, that work in the library, that want to do the best in all of our libraries, uh, that try to help our folks, especially our outline folks, they, uh, during the pandemic, they really showed their worth, the libraries did, so, uh, you know, I think we're gonna have to discuss later on, you know, when you get to the big topic of the high school, if there's gonna be a tax increase to that magnitude, then these small things will be reoccurring, should be in community, Derek, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, okay. Point taken, so, um, just from what I'm gathering, no action until we discuss.
I think all these things are not in the budget, this dirty, you got a magic.
I hear you.
And he don't.
I hear you. All right, so that'll take us through to Quasim, Cowie School, on the same items, uh, school systems?
So we're gonna do the- You mean the budget that, that we have in front of us now?
Yes, yes, not the schools yet, just the budget.
Derek, remind us of the total, the total increase is sixteen percent, correct?
Yeah, about one-
One point?
Six, uh, six, one point six million.
Total.
And again, that's on, if you want to reflect back in my budget message, there's pages twenty through twenty-two, I kind of highlight where we're at now, um-
What page, I'm sorry, Derek?
Twenty, pages twenty-three, twenty-two.
I read it today, I can't remember.
Jimmy, did we do the, uh, library thing, or did that individual?
We decided to hold for now?
Nothing, yeah.
Okay.
So the one point-
Sorry, I didn't take a vote on that, but-
Is it one point four?
One point six.
One point six, and that's a hundred percent reoccurring money?
Yes.
And the way that Dr. Baldwin explained it to us when he was speaking, is that, uh, most of that increase is for positions, correct? Is all of it for positions, Dr. Baldwin?
I would say with the exception of that fifty thousand dollar contract maintenance.
Rest of it is for positions, we hope it's position.
Yeah, that, 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 that request did not take into account any benefit increases, you know, the utility increases that we learned about today, there's nothing built into that budget.
Well, here's the facts on that, Mr. Chairman, that's a penny and a half on the tax rate. Right there, just for the schools, so, just for that portion of the schools, for the one point six million.
One point six would be two pennies.
Two pennies, almost exactly.
For?
The one point six million operational increase would be two pennies.
Yeah, that's two cents right there, without talking about anything else. So I think that's the discussion you have to have first.
I don't, well, what I was saying earlier is, is, uh, since they've got the money coming in from the federal government, about giving them the flexibility between operations and capital. What do we give each one of them, Derek, my pay?
Capital, we give one, 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 five zero, one point one five million. Operating expenses, we give eight point seven three two million. So, you, you're, you're saying then, if you can use some of the, the-
Why, I don't, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing, I'm tossing the softball up there, I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea, I was trying to think through it, so-
We can use that as funding for capital or operations. So that, that-
Okay.
As long as it meets those three criteria.
But if you use it for capital, that's, uh, that's firm, breaking mortar, top stuff.
One and done.
Yeah, it's one and done. But if you use it for the other one, in twenty twenty-four, then, then that's recurring monies or no money.
Potentially, potentially.
No monies.
See, that's the thing, there's many unknowns, you don't really know. Uh, Dr. Baldwin, you said in your fund balance, you had one point?
Today, we have one point three.
You got to re, that's Macon County tax rate, all the, the one, the fund balance is, so, I mean, but you, everybody needs, I remember when it was this.
Yes.
Very well.
Part of the reason that we still have one point three is because of those program enhancement positions. You know, we don't know how many we're gonna need in the spring. And we won't know until September the first how many we'll actually need. They give us a number of program enhancement positions in the spring, we apply those or not in the fall. We've been able to hold on to some of those positions up until twenty-one, twenty-two, when that huge, uh, need comes into play due to the full implementation of the K three class eleven. So, we won't have that moving forward.
I remember so well the driver education fiasco. Do you happen to remember that, Dr. Baldwin?
The teacher assistant, that, that was the, that was the teacher assistant.
You can't make it up. So that's, uh-
All right, so we'll, we'll hang with no changes as of now, but we'll, we'll circle back to that here in just a few minutes, when we talk about the high school. Uh, let's talk about Burnington, Paul, that's your district.
You know, I appreciate what do I say in the service to provide, one out of twelve, or one out of, one to two out of twelve asking for an increase now, by the same fuel, out of same ma, same, same maintenance issues, I'm not for, uh, any of tax increase at all.
I'd have to speak in favor of it, uh, Mr. Chairman, Burnington, uh, is like the rest of these volunteer fire departments, they still offer the best service for the money of any taxpayer dollars, and they're asking for a very small increase. Uh, Burnington has had its struggle retaining firemen, they're doing well now, uh, the leadership seems to be in control. If Warren was here, I believe he would agree, uh, that that small of increase, uh, in the whole lot of things with the, with the folks on, in Burnington, I think that's, I think that's reasonable, and, uh, and, and I think Mike done a good job of explaining why he, why he needs the increase.
They got the twenty-five percent fund balance, and, uh, at two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty thousand dollar budget, you find some funds in there. That's one, I'm one man.
What was, what was the increase?
Eight for meal?
Eight for meal.
It's eight thousand.
Twelve thousand dollars, twelve percent.
The community?
No.
It surprised, I mean, I'm speaking bluntly, it surprised me that they requested that, that minimal of an increase.
With sixty thousand dollars in the bank.
With that much money in the bank and with, uh, revaluation coming up here real soon, so. Okay, let's, I guess let's take a vote on it. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Raise your hands, please, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those signify by saying no.
That was for Burnington.
Burnington, Alto's the big one.
You're the liaison, I wish-
Thoughts on that?
That's it, they, they need an increase, I just don't know if they need an increase that big, uh, I'm in favor of an increase, that's a tremendous increase at half at one time.
But speaking, go ahead, Paul.
No, I mean-
No, I'm pondering, I mean, let's listen, listen to y'all's ideas, too, so.
You know, I appreciate they're the bind, they got a leak in, of course, we had a leak in Gemini's school in Highlands for twelve years, but, you know, they've got a leaking building, an outdated facility, but this concept of turning rural fire, rural volunteer fire departments into full, into full, semi-full-time fire departments, I think is just, it's, it's just unreasonable to me, that's not the, uh, charter of a rural fire department, and the five, five meal tax increase is phenomenal. I just, I just, I was hoping they were coming back with a scaled-down model, uh, of something, and I, I can't, I couldn't vote to increase anybody's taxes, five percent.
Do you in, in favor of any tax increase, Paul?
Um, no, and you hear this saying, well, they gotta pay their fair share, who sets the fair share? The government does. So, what is fair, I'm, it's not, it's not the matter of how much money you got, it's how you use it. They're the bind, and I-
What bothers me, Mr. Chairman, is that the last time they were here, it was three point seven, something like, three point, three point six, three point seven million, and now it's five point, uh, so, with our mileage rate, come out to three hundred and something dollars a square foot, uh, they bought the land, you gotta see what they've invested too. They own the land, they do have all the infrastructure in, it is gonna cost them money to sprinkle it, uh, about four times what it would cost if they had city water. But, uh, do they need, what's the basic need? You know, I just, I think they need an increase, I really do, and I think they need to put some money back into this building they've got for nothing from the Alto Community Building. But that's a different subject, but, uh, I would listen to your recommendation, Mr.- But that's a different subject, but, uh, I would listen to your recommendation, Mr. Chairman, as you're the liaison. I think that we can give them, I think they, they have plenty of land for expansion. I, I'm not, if it was anywhere close to the, the original three point something, I'd go for it. I would be on full onboard. But, uh, nearly four hundred dollars a foot, for a lot of, it's not Haiti, uh, it's, I know it costs a lot of money to build a specialty building, I do know that. But, uh, I think they do have a place for expansion, I know it's gonna cost them more when they come back and do that. It would be wonderful to, that if we had plenty of money, but, uh, that kind of increase on one community at one time. I've talked to several from down there, and they did all support it, the ones I talked to, they, every one of them said, you know, that don't bother us, that we're still, it's a real bargain. But at the end of the day, it comes down to this board and what we want to do, uh, for the people of that neighborhood. I will, uh, I think it's, I think it's a little much at one time, Mr. Chairman. I just, I mean, they can come back next year, maybe, and, and hit it again, or, uh, but if they could have stuck with the, the original thing around three point six, or whatever it was, I would, I would fully support that. But now, you had two million bucks in, in one year, which I'm not saying that that's right or wrong, but I think it's few, I think it's more than a community can handle.
I, I guess, I hear what you're saying, but I have allegiance to the community. They had input on this. To go by there and see that the trucks and stuff will, will fit inside the building. I, I, I just feel like the community had an opportunity, uh, to give their input, and, uh, with this increase, I hear y'all, construction people talk about this increase that's, that's happened, this is gonna be cheaper next year. And so I, I think with the community input that they verified in here, that I would have to go with this, I'd have to vote with, uh, the boards with Otto. I think the community had an input into it, and it seemed to me from the input they had there, and talking to some of the people there, they, they feel like they can handle the increase. I think it's tough too, but it's gonna be tougher next year. And that area is gonna grow from our broadband, uh, plan that we put together here. It, it, that's supposedly, it's gonna be the main area down through there, and business-wise, and homes. So me personally, I don't feel comfortable voting against the people of the community, if that's what they've chosen to do.
Sheer residents.
I mean, I keep it short and sweet, I do live down there, I mean, I hate to sound, I'm busy, never heard of the meeting, I wish I would have known.
Surprised me when you went to there.
When you said two people, like, I just feel like, I would like to go to the community and say, hey, you know, look, you guys put me in here, what do you think? You know, I feel like if this all of a sudden was sprung, I don't know, they'd say, holy cow, what, you know, I feel like we're going from a nineteen seventy-three Chevrolet with seven hundred thousand miles on it to a twenty twenty-one Cadillac right here, like, just overnight. I'm looking for a, you know, a nice Chevrolet, you know, just a good truck, you know?
How long we had the fire department?
That's right, I'm, I'm kind of right in the middle, I do think they need something better, I'm, they, they need something better, so I don't think they, the five point something million is really hard to justify.
Try to gain consensus on this board, it sounds like there might be consensus on this board to give some approval for an increase, but maybe not to the extent that he's asking, so, so then the, we're testing the breeze, my, my thought on it is, is that if we give them an increase, it gives them an opportunity to, uh, put some funds away. And maybe start. While we're doing is dragging their feet just another year is what we're doing.
Yeah, but I, I'm, and Mr. Chairman.
But I don't know how you come up with that, what that rate is, I mean, I have point, uh, point one oh on my mind, just for some strange reason, but there's no logic behind that.
Repeat that again, Mr. Chairman.
I have point one oh on my mind, but there's no logic in that, that's just a, again, that's plucking a feather out of the air.
And that's, that would be, uh, two-thirds of what they're asking, right?
No, it'd be more than they're asking.
Be right.
We could split it in half of what they're asking.
Is it accounting average?
They're asking for five foot over five, that would be given, three, three cent.
Give them how much, Lori?
Thirty.
Three cent.
Three cent.
If we gave it a. If the millage was ten cent, you'd be giving them like a three, three point, three cent, sixteen, one hundred, and they're asking for like the five cent.
What's the average?
Oh, I don't know.
You just have to add these up and divide it.
Well, you, it's hard to do that, because you've got Highlands, who's really, really low, but has.
They have such a high tax base.
Had, had tax base, then you go to Burnentown, and, and some of these outlying communities, you have, uh, you know, the tax base is not that high, so their fire taxes will be like this.
Just for your, just for your information, I don't have a dog in this fight, I'm not for the tax rate or against it, but just say someone had a two hundred thousand dollar home in that community. The five point four, three cent tax increase will be a hundred and eight dollars and sixty cent a year increase on their tax bill. For a two hundred thousand dollar home, you divide that by three hundred and sixty-five days, that's thirty cent a day. So that just, to me, when I think about tax increases, I like to break it down in years and days. Just so, anyway, like I said, I don't have a dog in the fight, but just, just some information.
You're doing the increase, what is the overall, their millage, is that their total?
That was the.
Six?
That was the increase only, yeah.
That was the increase only?
Yeah.
So, could you do the math again on the existing millage?
On the point oh six eight four?
Yeah.
Or do you want it plus the new rate?
Plus the new rate, yeah, the total.
You want the total?
Yeah.
Okay.
The existing and the proposed form.
Two forty-five, forty a year for a two hundred thousand dollar home, uh, sixty-seven cents a day. That's the current rate plus the increase, give you the new millage rate.
And that's only on your home, you've got it on all your personal property, on your trucks, your automobiles.
Again, I don't have a dog in this fight.
This may be one of those things, Mr. Chairman, we have to look at if we, again, decide on the, on the high school. We got, that's, that could be wound up in this conversation too.
When were the public hearings, did he say? Do you remember?
With this budget?
No, for this, the public hearing for the Otto Fire Department.
I just saw it.
It was advertised in the paper.
Nobody reads.
What's your thoughts, Mr. Chairman?
I'm thinking we might split the difference between what he's, uh.
And ask them to reduce the size of the building and go ahead and start the process.
I would like, I would expect, I would hope that Josh in that time could.
Said I'd be happy to go there.
Whether, if you don't mind with him, and just me with him, and look over at W M M C, so. So what would that be, Lori, if we split the two?
So you want to cut the point oh five four three in half?
No.
No.
The difference between point one two two four, and, oh, yes, point one two two four and point oh six eight four, whatever that increase would be.
See, now, the, the thing Warren provided, or whoever, it said point one two two seven.
He said point one two two four tonight.
I know, but I think the book says point one two two seven, that's what I've been basing everything on. Yeah, the book says point one two two seven. I think Warren did this spreadsheet. Where's the book?
Yeah, here.
Let's look at it real quick, 'cause I noticed that too when he spoke, he said the point one two two four.
And while she's looking, you got the spreadsheet, Derek?
Yes, I did.
It's actually reflected in there that Westlake and Scaly have a tax reduction?
No, we're not proposing a reduction.
No, but I mean, the way it's spread out here.
Yeah, like I said, Warren did that, so I don't know, but.
Go ahead.
I don't think any other word.
Same question.
I don't think any other word.
I had that same question.
You should have asked that when Warren was here, but I'm pretty sure Jimmy Team told me when he dropped off these notebooks.
He said there was none.
Nobody is asking for a tax decrease.
Well, they weren't asking, it was just the math.
It was their math, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm not ready to jump up your shelf.
Well, see, now, this is different.
Yeah, it's different.
This sheet has, this sheet here has point one two two eight, the spreadsheet has point one two two seven, so.
And he said one point two two four tonight.
So who knows? I don't know.
What did, in his message, I don't.
It's effectively about five cent, I mean, it's a little over, but almost.
In his message, what did he say?
He said point one two two four increase.
In his message?
Oh, in his speech tonight.
Yeah, let's not see what he said, let's see what he wrote.
Are you talking about, here's a little memo.
Point one two two eight.
That's what it says in it. So second page, right?
Yeah.
So that's what we need to go by, point one two two eight, that's what the chief put in right there.
Yeah, point in the memo, yeah.
So half of that.
It's roughly point nine five four, one two two four, so point nine five five, point oh nine five five.
So my point one oh wasn't far off.
You got home money.
Do you want to give them half of the increase they're asking for, or is that what?
Well, that was just my suggestion, I'm.
It'd be point oh two, point oh two seven, two. So the increase would be.
If somebody, does anybody know, I wish Warren was here, Franklin Fire Department's building, they're building a new fire station right now, as we speak. I wonder why that came out of Swatford. Does anybody know that answer to that?
I don't know, I know it's minimal, because they're only doing storage bins.
The minimal stuff.
It's just a garage.
But that would give us a. The architect told me there's only twenty-three, thirty-two heat in this. And I just, I know prices are crazy and they'll adjust, but still, five point eight million dollars, I know it costs a lot. I know there's specialty things to do in a fire department. The concrete has to be like two foot thick where they park, I know all that stuff, but.
So, half of, half of their increase request is point zero two seven two, so their new millage rate would be point zero nine five six. So almost back to the dime you were suggesting earlier.
Can we get a motion on the same, or are we to make it?
So I'll make a motion that we adjust their, uh, fire tax rate, uh, to point one oh.
Point one oh, got a motion on the floor, I'll second it, in the discussion.
Will they get them?
Go ahead.
If, if you do this, are, are we just shagging them down to a minimum building that's not gonna be worth?
That's a good question.
What, what, what are we doing to them here?
That's a good question.
You gonna build a half a house, or you gonna build all that?
We're giving them, and we're giving them a big enough increase where they can.
Put a wall down, name it down, so. It's just like building your own house, you have to have a budget to start with. If you want to surprise that budget, that's up to you. But, uh, you, you have, this gives them a real good budget to work with.
I think it does too, so.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong, or five point eight's too high, but I've not saw the plans, I'm not.
As he said, he'll come back to business next year.
Does it have to be decided right now? Can it come back to you, please, and have more discussion with the department? And just, you know, have more, just feel like.
Well, if we're gonna have another work session, yeah, if not, if we're not gonna have no more work sessions.
Our meeting is Tuesday, and we're hoping to improve the budget Tuesday night.
And last year, they came and did proposal, and I'm the one who made the motion not to, because it's pandemic year, so I feel like.
So their building request will be ten?
Ten cent, yeah, that's, I think that's kind of what's on the floor, I don't think y'all voted yet.
That's in essence all they've requested, they just want to have a family, mate.
I mean, I think this gives them, with what they have now, Mr. Chairman, and give them this, it gives them, well, we know we've got this X amount of dollars, we've done this much to the building, let's see if we can make it fit to at least get us underway. I think that would do it.
Well, I'm thinking the same as you, I mean, I, I agree. Now, as I say, if not, he'll, as he said, he'll come back and visit us next year, as he did last year, when we declined him last year.
Yeah.
So.
But still, that's, even at point one oh, that's a hefty increase for them citizens, but regardless, they, they might support it, uh, till they get that tax bill.
I'm just thinking about all the people who worked the plant down there, I mean, that's just a lot of tired people with fixed income and.
But that's still the cheapest tax rate option.
Is it? That's what I'm not sure. Still.
In that fire book, the first page of the show, is it?
I'm just looking at.
West, out of here, West Franklin's at, at, uh.
You can see where Otto is.
One oh seven six. One oh three, one oh five, one oh five, one oh eight, one oh one.
This chart's the best thing in the world to go by. And it shows you, like Highlands is over here in the, they're the lowest, and there's a reason for that. There's a reason Scaly Mountain and Nineahala, Nineahala's the highest.
Maybe they stopped our money and prices come down and.
Nineahala's the highest.
Uh, I guess Mountain Valley's the highest.
Nineahala's the highest.
Lowest, and they got the lowest tax base. So we're, we're ready to go?
Probably the smallest district too, I don't know, I was, I was guessing. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All four to one. Thank you, guys. Respect the fact that we can respectfully disagree and have a good conversation, enjoy serving with all y'all. Good opinions. Alright, so that's it, so next item on the agenda is, uh, discussions regarding the new high school. Dr. Baldwin, I'm sure you kept up speed from the newspapers and social media and everything else, but this board, uh, decided to, uh, that we did like the plan that was presented to us, and that we would like to move forward with a new high school, new Franklin High School on the existing campus. The way it was explained to us, it can be, uh, construction, a lot of things can happen there without too much intrusion, uh, to the existing student base, so. Now it's up to this board to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. There, there's been a lot of, uh, ideas and thoughts that I'm aware of, I, I'm, I'm just going off the top of my head. New Cherokee County just got a tremendous grant from the state, uh, to help them handle theirs, so there's that opportunity with us. Uh, I have made a phone call to Senator Corbin, we will meet next week to, uh, to discuss, or his first convenience is what we discussed, so we mentioned next week. To discuss that, uh, there is the opportunity for, uh, which I am in favor of, a quarter cent sales tax increase. Derek, can you give me a number off that, what that would provide? Off this year's numbers roughly?
Rough estimate, about one point seven million a year.
One point seven million per year.
That has to go to a referendum, correct?
Yep, even number.
Next year.
Next year.
So I would like seeing that put on a referendum, but again, this is my personal opinion, I'd like to see it put on a referendum. Jackson County's already at seven percent, Slayne's already at seven, it's Clay, Clay at seven two. Right, might go, might not, but at least that offers to me, it's a no-brainer, because if we're gonna do this anyway, uh, I would, I would rather some of our tourists help pay for this that are passing through versus weighing it all on the backs of our ad lorm tax, so. So we've got that, uh, then the last thing is a tax increase, uh, which I think is inevitable, uh, in any scenario you look at, uh, of how we afford this, so. I'd ask our manager, knowing this, what I know off the top of my head, to provide us some numbers, and I think it's been mentioned a couple times tonight, what a, a one cent tax increase is, or millage rate, just kind of what it.
It's about eight hundred thousand dollars, if you're looking for rented on ninety million, we got our financial advisors with Davenport to run it under the same scenario that we ran the middle school renovations under at that time, and in twenty twenty-three, fully loaded, principal and interest assuming a twenty-year term, four percent interest rate, you're looking at six point six three cents on the tax.
That's to fund it all.
That's the ad lorm rate.
Six point one.
Six three.
So as again, in my, uh, my scenario, in my perfect world, I would hope we could get some grant money from this, from the state, somewhere Cherokee County, I would hope that the, again, my pie in the sky wishlist, if I can get lucky, you know, whether, we would get that, we would get a, a quarter cent tax, sales tax increase on the referendum, and maybe just a very minimal, uh, ad lorm tax increase to, to handle this. So the questions, uh, I mean, those are my thoughts, if anybody has any thoughts on other on funding, I'm, I'm over there.
They're great thoughts, Mr. Chairman, but the holes in it is this, we're a tier three county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our options, our chances of getting a grant like Cherokee, which is a tier one county. How we got to a tier three and they dropped to a tier one, I. How we got to a tier three and they dropped to a tier one, I'm confused on that. But I think our chances are slim with the money that's available. We might get some, but I don't think we're going to get a lot as far as a referendum goes. A referendum is fine, but I think it would get beat seven to three in Macon County.
It might, unless we put it out there.
Well, we put it out there before. This ain't new, but referendum was never passed to Macon County.
When was it put out?
It was put out, uh, how many years you been there, Dr. Baldwin? It was put out ten years ago.
It wasn't put out last year, if I remember.
Yeah, it was put out and got beat like a tom-tom.
It wasn't ten years ago, it was longer than that.
Might have been twelve. Our previous superintendent was two...
Yeah, Dr. Brigham did.
Yep. And he got beat like a tom-tom. And there's never been a referendum passed to Macon County. Remember they put a referendum out for the middle grade school, for cafeteria, when they didn't build a cafeteria?
What does that tell you?
Tells you we've got a lot of folks here that forget that somewhere down the line, somebody paid taxes for their kids to go to school. And they have forgotten that, is what it tells me.
I asked county manager one time.
Sure.
We looked at a graph the other day. That showed what our region, the state region...
I didn't have it on there.
Had the opportunity to work with him the day before, and I saw this graph, and I saw it again the other night. And I think what I'm asking, if we do go up to that six point six three, what does that change here? Is Macon County still the lowest? Media.
Yeah, there's extras.
Brittany, something up there. Jake. Can you give us a dialogue on this?
Yeah, it just shows us, that's what Macon County's tax rate is compared to the region, our seven county region, as well as the average tax rate across the state of North Carolina in fiscal year twenty-one. That's the tax rate in the state of North Carolina is point six seven five five on the hundred. Average tax rate in seven county western regions, point four six two eight on the hundred. Macon County's point three seven four seven on the hundred.
Are there any quotas with that, fire tax, et cetera?
No. That's just straight ad valorem tax rate.
That's ad valorem, so they didn't consider anything? And some counties don't have fire taxes, we have fire taxes.
That's just straight, that's straight ad valorem, that's how they...
So it's misleading.
And the Office of State Budget Management.
But if we put in that six point six three...
Figure your fire tax in there.
And the, and the fire tax?
Because that's a millage rate. Anything that's a millage rate is valued on property. Whether it be real estate, personal property. So our property taxes are just, our property taxes is thirty-seven point four seven. My millage rate on my fire tax is ten point something, so there I'm at forty-seven. And that's on my property, personal and real. So it lines up close to fifty, fifty mils. So this can be misleading, these graphs, Ken, on where we raise statewide.
Right, and that's why the title of that graph is specifically property tax.
Property tax is not, yeah, that's real property, it's not personal properties.
But if we looked at it from the title standpoint, and if we increased our ad valorem tax six point six three, then you're at the forty-four point one zero, or forty-four ten?
Property tax.
Property tax, ad valorem tax. And so with that, even with that, we would still be the lowest within this region?
You'd be, you'd be, you'd have, you'd be below the regional average, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be the lowest in the region.
Okay. Now, we're number three in the state at this time, I believe, with ad valorem tax.
Yes.
And what percentage of the money that comes into our budget is ad valorem compared to what Paul was saying, property tax? There's no comparison of that. I mean, ad valorem is what the money's at.
Fifty-six percent of our budget's out of there.
Yeah, that's what the money is.
That's what I read there the other night.
So that's counting property tax on your property and on your personal property.
It's fifty-six percent.
Fifty-six percent of the overall budget.
But if you break...
But now, it does not count fire tax.
No, it's in a separate fund.
That's in a separate fund. That does not flow through the general fund.
But even if you added all the fire tax millage rates together and multiplied it by the residents, it's very minimal.
True.
Real property's about thirty million a year.
I have to do the math.
Well, you went to Western to do that?
Real property's about thirty million a year. Fire tax is about five million a year.
Four point three million, yes.
Four point...
Four point three.
Yeah.
So compared to ad valorem...
Compared, yeah, that would be safe to say.
It's not, yeah, it's, it's not minimal to no taxes is minimal. But it's, but that's where the money goes from Macon. If you're going to do a project like this, you're looking at, you're going to have to raise ad valorem taxes. And or, you're going to have to do both, Mr. Chairman, if you want to put it on a referendum. And this year, I don't know if we got, if we can do it this year.
It's going to be next year.
It has to be in twenty...
Got to be an even...
Twenty-two. It'd have to be in twenty-two. But the reason, only reason Jackson County, you know, they've tried it, a lot of counties have tried it. If you see how they do it, they pick a special time when to put that tax rate on. They done it during a runoff, didn't they? They put in a runoff election, I think. You remember Eric?
I do not.
Well, that's what they did. And they had all the Western Carolina students vote, so that's because they know if they put it out there, just like we would, it would get smoked.
Put it on the general.
But you're still talking about raising tax six point six, six dollars and... Six, six point six three?
Cents.
Cents.
And Rory gave that example. What would that do to a two hundred and dollar half?
Let's see, times point five six six three.
Hundred and thirty-two.
Hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cent a year.
For two hundred?
Thirty-six cent a day.
And what would that do, since Highlands, if you look at the numbers, Mr. Chairman, Highlands is probably upwards of fifty-five to sixty percent of our total taxes.
It was fifty-two at last election, but...
It's more than that now.
It's more than that now.
I'd say it's closer to sixty, maybe? I bet you. So that's, what do you think?
You wait until the next revaluation, it's going to be seventy.
It'll be seventy percent of our total taxes. So since you represent Highlands, which...
That's what I was saying last meeting, I'm the one, y'all don't have any pressure, I'm the one getting his feet on the chin up there.
But that's true thing to...
But they also want a new high school. The ones I've talked to, they said, yeah.
No, they want to do, they want to do, they want to do athletic fields.
At Highlands. But they also, they're not really totally against a new high school.
No, 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 that's stated. No, no, absolutely.
And the arts program, they want to...
I have not heard anybody speaking against that at all.
No.
I think one thing that goes through my mind though, about a new high school...
Mr. Chairman, can you excuse me just a minute?
About a new high school is that your high school is a signeture institution that represents Macon County educational philosophy. If you go down, if you go south on four forty-one or north, Franklin High School is the only school you'll see coming into town. You can't see the early college, you can't see the middle school, you can get a glance at Carthage and stuff like that. But Franklin High School is a signeture of what we are here, and what we represent. More people see Franklin High School due to athletics, all those things. Franklin High School has a, has a, we need to make sure it represents what we are, because that's what people see when they come here. And if we keep shortchanging Franklin High School and the development of it, it's going to be a negative representation in my, I feel. Having been the principal there for twenty-one years, you have to work hard at that school now to make it be a signeture school. And it's hard to do, because you don't have the facilities. But what I've seen in this drawing concept too, we can make Franklin High School a signeture school. And it can say, hey, that community there really invested in their high school, education is important here. And so, I'm a taxpayer too, but I want that school, I'd like to see a new school there and that concept too, and for us to have a name within this region of, we are promoters of education and fairness to our students. Our young people need to have a signeture school, high school. And other places do. I'll never forget the, my son went to Western, what he said was, because our, our school facilities did not have the internet, the broadband, things like that, that we need now, more of, better, he would go into a classroom and sit down beside someone from Charlotte, because the people from Charlotte had their upgrades and stuff. And so he would go into a classroom and make sure, he looked around to see where those students were from in order to be updated, or being in the same realm as the other people are. So I think Franklin High School, it may not be something for us right now, but I'm telling you for our grandchildren, all, rest of us, seventy, you know, it's been pieced together for seventy years. And if you talk to some people in the know, the maintenance people, they'll tell you the infrastructure is terrible. But I think we have an opportunity at this time to enhance, I'm going to call it the double A, the academics and the athletics. And those two pieces go together within a high school. And you have to keep it in balance too. If one of those gets out of balance, it's a tough way. It's a tough road to hold. So I'm invested in Franklin High School, I think the concept too is fine. Obviously, I may be the only one voting anyway, I would vote for us to put a tax piece in place, so we build a new high school.
But she goes along with that, this was based on ninety million dollars. Would you think we could assume that if we, if that should pass this board, that we could also include a portion of, you know, Mr., Dr. Baldwin, I don't know what he's going to get, but his request was one point four increase? One point six. And that included the arts, correct? Do you think we could, that would, let's say we, in the best case scenario, let's say we, we got through the high school with a, with eighty million instead of the ninety million. That other, what I'd say would be, money would give us recurring expense for a lot of things going forward, because you don't, you get to do this one time.
This is it.
This is it.
My duration of my lifetime, I'm sure this is, this is it.
Just so the board understands too, the assumptions that the financial advisor used was ninety million, but that was issuing the debt in spring of twenty twenty-three, okay? So that's two years from now. And the first payment wouldn't be due until fiscal year twenty-four. And the tax increase talked about would be in fiscal year twenty-three, not fiscal year twenty-two. But of course, if you think we, you know, if you're wanting to speed up the process and issue debt a year from now, then yes, you would need that six point six three cent. So I just want to make sure the board's clear.
Why wouldn't we want to do it?
If we're going to raise taxes, why wouldn't we want to do it?
On the underlying assumptions.
But you could go ahead and, if that would speed up the process, you could put it in a special fund like Laurie was saying for the architect and start the processes now.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could raise taxes now, but you know, a project like this is major. I'll be surprised if we can, you know, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I'll be surprised if we can issue debt a year from now for it. I mean, it's possible. But yeah, Derek and I were talking about this, you know, before this meeting, that if you did raise taxes now, like he was saying, the money generated, the extra money generated, we could put in the capital, the school capital project fund, go ahead and go through the architect selection, hire the architect, you've got money earmarked to hire the architect. And then see how far we can get down the road and let's just say, so this, this is going to raise like five point three million dollars, the six point six three cent roughly. So plus, I don't remember what the architect fees were, right, about eighty-eight million dollars, but...
Three to four.
Let's say they're four million. Well, that leaves you one point three million that you could maybe use as a down payment, or, you know, so to speak, that you might not have to borrow ninety million, you might have to borrow eighty-nine. I mean, it's not a lot, but you, you get my point. Or like you said, if you have other uses that you'd like to, a piece of it to school operations, whatnot. But yeah, I mean, there's nothing stopping you from raising the taxes now, but I just wanted to make sure you understood these underlying assumptions from the financial advisor for issuing debt spring of twenty twenty-three.
But if we had an assurance that, what's really important to me, of course, is the new high school, but also those school nurses who talked about the mental health, I think going forward, we have like eighty-two kids now in, you know, protective custody, probably eighty-two more that's going in, so hits, I think that's... The arts program is wonderful, and I know that, but these kids are going to have to have some really special help going forward, I guarantee you that. We just assume Cardinal. Cardinal was the largest LME, why you just assume that responsibility? So millions of kids, and a lot of them in Macon County is going to need...
Comments on this side?
Oh, it's up to Chairman, but did you say we, we agreed to move along on the school?
We did at our last meeting, yes.
How did, we did do that in formals?
We did too, yeah. We agreed to accept that.
Four to one.
Oh, was that the one? Not surprising. And the reason for that, the reason, the reason I have a lot of one votes is that we just decided one night in the meeting, it's time to build a high school. Well, I can't buy that, because I'm not opposed to funding education and providing the best of everything, but it's just, we're considering encumbering the taxpayers of Macon County. They said eighty-eight million dollars, that didn't include furnishings, you know, it's going to be a hundred million dollar project. And as I talked with Dr. Baldwin about, we're thirty million in debt now for schools, thirty-two million. It's going to tag another hundred million on school debt. But we have a capital improvement plan that we spent good money to develop, that did not include educational system. So if we do this, in this rapid-fire motion we're at, any improvements to county assets and county structures is dead for the next few years. There's just no more, I cannot fathom this board voting to go in debt over a hundred and thirty million dollars. That's just, it's, it's, it's mind boggling, we're even considered going in. And then the little discussions that we've had about this moving forward and making improvements to Franklin High School, what were our options? Could we look at the current structures that we have? What are options to make those better? Can we just have to go out and spend a hundred million dollars just carte blanche, spur of the moment, without any public input? We have the authority to do that, but the only way that I'm going to support it would be through a referendum. If the citizen of Macon says, hey, look, let's build a new high school, I'm on board a hundred percent. Whatever it costs, however we fund it, because those taxes are going to hit me too. But as Ronnie said, referendums always fail. Well, there's a reason for that. If, if, if the people that represent us, the people that vote us into this office, if they don't have a voice in our actions and what we do, then we're irresponsible.
That's the reason that elected you, Paul.
Pardon? Pardon?
That's the reason you were elected to lead that board.
I was elected to represent them, and that's exactly the only way to know what all of my constituents want is ask them to vote on it. It's not up to three members on this board. That's all it takes to, to encumber us for a hundred million dollars. That's not representative of the community, because I can't, I can't just sitting here for a couple of months, hey, let's build a new high school, all right, how do we do it? Here, let's raise your taxes. That's just, I think it's just a gross example of irresponsibility.
We've worked on the new high school for how many years, Dr. Baldwin? Ever since you've been here. Ever since, goes back to when, when.
And I asked you when I came on this board, Ronnie, why do we need a new high school? And you know what your answer was? That was old.
And it is.
And I told you, you go home and Google Harvard and Yale, see how old those buildings were, three hundred years old. Age doesn't have anything to do with it, I'm seventy-three years old.
They didn't have a standard course running across the floor either.
But anyway, that's my thoughts on this thing. I'm not opposed to improving educational facilities. But we do the high school, we gotta do, I'm hearing each Franklin now and the other schools, I mean, is, is, are we just funding the educational system of Macon County, or are we trying to address other issues, a justice center, a courthouse, you know, so many other things that we need to be addressing. So I, I'm not opposed to improving educational facilities at Franklin High School, I think they're much needed, but I would like to see what the options are. I can't support this just deciding too much, we're gonna spend a hundred million dollars. If it goes to referendum, I'm a hundred percent behind it.
Talking about the referendum, in response to the twelve-year mark, I was just coming out of high school and I still had a flip phone, you know, this new technology and social media, I feel like the public really knew that building was seventy, seventy-two years old, and if they knew that the gym had a boiler that's failing, they're still, you know, catastrophic failure. I don't, I haven't heard anybody oppose, once they understand all the, the issues. I think knowledge is power. So everybody I talk to, when you hear eighty, ninety million dollars, they, they gasp. But then when you say, well, if we'd have built it ten, twenty years ago, it'd probably been fifty-five million. If we build it ten, twenty years from now, it's probably, who knows? It's pure speculation. So I think knowledge is power. I mean, I do like to have some community input. I think there may be some potential for a hybrid, where we could get something kinda going in the interim with, you know, with some track athletic facilities. I, I still, I still find the track as a priority. I mean, the track was a bad one, I was in the school, it's not getting any better. So I really want some community involvement, I wanna hear from the teachers, I wanna hear from, you know, the, you know, just some seniors in the community and just hear from the people, and, and I don't wanna rush it. I don't wanna spend a hundred million dollars and back up and say, you know, we threw that thing together. I want it to be methodical and thought out and, and the representation of, of, you know, good leadership with some, some good, you know, foresight.
All right. My turn. I'm, I'm kinda between what Mr. Shields was saying and what Mr. Young was saying, I'm, I'm right in between the two of them. I, I'm, I don't think I'm for biting off that big of a tax increase tonight, but I'm for a tax increase. I'm thinking we might go ahead and go up just a few cents, not six cents, more of a, I was thinking more of a five percent increase versus a, a dramatic one, even if, you know, seven percent. And my thoughts on it are is that we take that money and go ahead and hire an architecture firm and go ahead and start the plans, and then we start the discussions, as Commissioner Young was saying. You start putting the plans, you start getting input. And then once we know what we've, are going for, we have a, an end to our plans, we have an end to the road of what we're gonna try and do, that we have all the thoughts from Crossmacon County in, we're gonna be right into valuation at that point, two years down the road. And it, it's gonna be dramatic. County manager and I were discussing the other day, we're not, would Jackson County just put a billion dollars?
They picked up a billion dollars.
I'm expecting Macon County to be very close. And I think then that's when you figure out where to pay for it. And in the meantime, we also have a time to go for, as Commissioner Higgins said, a referendum. I mean, you could pay for it, architects have a fund balance, but we also have some other, we have some other items in the books that we've already got the ball rolling with SCC, with Nantahala, with the community bill, and we've got some other stuff we're gonna be pulling from that. I keep hearing, I don't know where it comes from, but I keep hearing from our advisors that it's not good to pull too much out of fund balance at one particular time, but I really wouldn't mind seeing us moving forward with, taking the plans that were presented to us, pursuing them further, and I, I will support a tax increase if it is to pay for that, if that's what we need to do, pay for it. We all have different sort of opinion. I hear you, yes, Paul, that's fine.
Lori, I mean, I hate to.
But I'm in between here.
Is six-two, you said it raised five million a year or four million?
The six point six three cents.
Yes.
Raised five point three million dollars.
In a year.
Can we go up? How much would it cost Jimmy to do what you're suggesting? Obviously.
If it's just five point three million, Mr. Chairman, it would still cost, by the time you pay the architect fees and hire that person, still looking at four cents.
Well, how about, is the architect's fee four million? That'd be five pennies if it's four million.
We're not gonna pay the architects a hundred cent upfront though.
No. But you can't, you can't pre, I can't pre-order the contract if the money's not available, the budget isn't.
You have to have the money budgeted, have the money available.
I know when Emily Kite was here, you know, she talked about phasing it, I don't recall, she was like, you know.
She won't start digging dirt in September, dude, that's Lordly.
But there was talk of phasing it and, you know, possibly, I can't remember what she called it, it was some kind of study, because of course, there was questions about the soils.
I think she said we'd do that for sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, there was some kind of a study, so it just depends on what the pleasure of the board is.
Two point something million to go into the National Guard Army, speaking of things that was done on spur of the minute, two, two point something million there, right?
We haven't, actually, we haven't started defining that yet, we're still, we're waiting on SCC to get back.
It'll be about two, two million or so, we, we estimate it. Then we got seven hundred grand in Nantahala for the building decree.
No, no, no. How much?
Jack Morgan said seven hundred and something thousand, didn't he? They tell what Jack came back with? Yeah.
We haven't appropriated anything from that.
No, but that's why he said it was gonna cost to fix it. That's what it was gonna cost to fix it.
We haven't appropriated that, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars, buy it.
Yeah, but we gotta fix it. It ain't a building, all it is is a roof. So we gotta, that's money that's, we gotta allow for. These other requests that we have from the school, from the art department, to the, especially the school nurses, that's money. So either you're gonna have to hit the fund balance pretty hard for reoccurring cost, or, you know, like Jimmy says, you can phase it out, but I think the lowest you can phase it to is, you know, is, is probably five cents, Mr. Chairman, I don't know.
It's hard for me to add alarm when there's fifty-one percent in the fund balance. To me, it's like when you, when you up to a mill rate.
But there's not fifty-one percent in there, Josh, that's the thing about it.
What I've, what I've calculated, Mr. Manager, if you.
What is the fund balance?
It's in the, it's fifty-one percent, it's in your budget message.
Yeah, estimated.
But to take the total.
It's forty-five million.
I just have a problem.
Twenty-eight.
Up in the mill rate with, how much, how much money do we have in our debt? We, we agree to twenty-five percent.
It is estimated in the fund balance, is estimated to be fifty-one point six percent or approximately twenty-seven point six three two million in unassigned fund balance.
And that'll take twenty-five percent off of that.
That's an estimate.
You'll take half, half of that off, because we've got fifty percent, y'all's policy's twenty-five, so you divide that in about half.
So that shows you how much real money you have.
No, that's, that is unassigned, that, that is unassigned money, twenty-seven point six three two million.
Is that allowing for a twenty-five percent? We have to keep it?
That's unassigned fund balance, that's not allowed, no.
No.
That's at fifty-one percent, point six percent of the budget, is twenty-seven point six three two million.
If you have that number, that gives you twenty-five percent left in there.
Right. So that tells you about how much money do we really have in fund balance, Lori?
About thirteen point eight.
If you cut it, if you cut it in half, you have thirteen point eight.
That's about what it is.
We'd never wanna do that in one leg, that would affect our credit rating, you know.
Yeah, you can't do that.
It wouldn't cost thirteen million to do it.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
It's, it's, all I'm suggesting is how do you go to the taxpayers and say, we're up in your mill rate, well, why do you have thirty-one million dollars sitting in the bank and you go up my taxes? Like, use the money you had before, like, that's all I'm suggesting, it's just a, pardon my experience.
No, it's not, yeah, I've, I've worked for eight years and got shot at every time, you know, we're gonna raise people's taxes five meals and.
An architect fee would be a, for the plan design, would be a one-time expenditure for your plans. Now, it, it would be, you know, if you have to separate the contract, what you're gonna contract with for, you know, you got plan design, and can you separate the plan design and bid, and bid? I don't know, I don't know that, we'll have to, we'll have to research that, we're gonna carry it through the bid process.
Typically, we appropriate fund balance for something like that, but then when we go borrow the money, we repay ourselves.
Pay ourselves back.
Yeah, that's the typical pattern is being, is to appropriate fund balance and then repay ourselves when the loan.
They say, Mr. Chairman, you got, you hold sixty percent of the card, so.
So we're, we're ignoring the.
Paul will vote no anyway, it don't matter.
Absolutely.
So we have to move on from that.
I don't vote on a motion. So if we do this, the referendum's, they're dead, right? We're not taking it to referendum?
That'll be for, the referendum can only happen in a given number of years, so it'll happen with next year's election for the referendum. My, my suggestion was, was to get the plans drawn, do the background information, so when you sell the referendum, or here, here's what we're selling the referendum, this is what is to pay for.
You're talking about a solid plan.
And what's.
We need that.
And if the referendum fails, then what? You gonna leave them in a high school for the next fifty-two years?
If that's what the people want, Ronnie, give it to them. That's representative government, man.
I think that's why I was elected, to, to have these tough votes.
No, you're elected to spend all this money.
You've never taxed, you've never been raised since you've been on this board.
What?
Taxes ain't been raised.
Oh, absolutely. Two years ago, we went from thirty-four nine to thirty-seven, Ronnie, you're forgetting.
We made revenue neutral.
We used revenue neutral. That was when we had the, that's when we had the last rebound, and that was revenue neutral, I wanted a tax increase.
But if it goes from thirty-four nine to thirty-seven, isn't that a tax?
But it's revenue neutral, Paul, that's for the, the value of the land.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No, no, no.
Everybody's.
So again, I'm just gonna be honking on, I think it'd be good to have a solid plans if the referendum, again, if it passes, I think there's other means versus just paying for it immediately upfront and balancing it all on.
But you gotta send the referendum through, then what?
Well, if it does.
Cross that bridge when you come to.
Cross that bridge when you get there, then maybe then you have to balance on the backs of that door, that's what you do then, so.
Ronnie's been, he's been on that board for twenty years.
Josh, where are you standing with this?
I just feel like it's hard for me to raise that alarm with that much money sitting in the bank. Like you say, we made a, we made a discussion about twenty-five percent is a gentleman's agreement or a contingency with other commissioners, and to me, it's just hard to go and tell my grandmother that we're upping our property taxes, and she's gonna look at the bank and say, I just have a hard time settling that, especially, especially in Otto right now.
Yeah, yeah.
We're usually up in Otto.
One penny gets you eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm all clear.
You laid the best feet, so.
We're, we're in a quandary here.
But I still think we need, I still think you need to move on with the plan, I hope he's talking about a plan. Let's put it together, let's put this plan together, I don't, I don't know how it's gonna cost, I hope the end result of the plan, having you go to finance it, is it, we get a new high school.
And if the people of Macon County want it, let's do it, Gary, let's build the best thing we can. Let's don't ram something down everybody's throat just because we want a new seat at the football stadium.
There's nothing down our throat.
I guess, should, should we at the same time look at how much it's gonna cost to renovate the current structure? The football field, the fine arts, the main building, the gym?
I think that ought to be an option, absolutely.
We've done that.
Where's it at, Ronnie?
Well, we, we had those numbers.
Where's it at? I've not seen those numbers, Ronnie, been there nine years.
It was gonna be more than the high school, a new one, at that time.
Well, where are the numbers, Ronnie?
Where's that, whatever happened to all that?
I've never seen it, but I've been there nine years, now.
The fine arts building was gonna be, I forget, we could, it was gonna be cheaper to try it down and rebuild it.
We do everything on the motion, we don't do anything on the facts.
Like, yeah, let's get another National Guard Army up there, that'd be good.
Let's, let's move it into a, a progress forward, let's don't just stay on that year.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I agree, I agree, just figuring out how we go for that.
Appropriate some funds to get a solid plan or options or whatever, Dr. Baldwin.
We have a lot of other things on the agenda.
If it's not a, if it's not a, pardon me, but if it's not a, if we're talking about doing it out of the fund balance, that's not something that we would have to, we can put that out after we get a quote from the architect on, on what a contract for a set of plans would look like. We, we don't have to, we don't have to nail that in stone to be able to have a budget ordinance.
No, 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 not at all.
FY twenty-two budget forward.
If y'all all have the consensus to take fund balance to hire an architect, then that's not a part of budget ordinance.
I will add to what, what Manager Rollum said, I mean, that was one firm with one opinion, and that was all conceptual and it was, you know, it cost nothing. I'm sure there are many other firms that are willing to, you know, we put it out for bid, we accept prices, look, I'd like to see other options. Mr. Shields, we love that concept, but there's more than that, there's more than just that company, I'm sure they're, they're preferred vendor, but, you know, I wanna put it out there and, and keep, keep them honest, you know, I wanna see other bids.
Yeah, and what you're saying, Josh, like in North Carolina, general statutes, they just got with Novus and this construction company and presented something. Other companies could present ideas, but at the end of the day, we have to advertise and do a request for qualifications. Architectural Services in St. Louis, Carolina are qualified base selections, so unfortunately, well, maybe you're talking about price for a new school, but the way the process would work is we would advertise, we would rank the firms based on qualifications, whoever's the best ranking, then we negotiate a contract price, does that make sense?
And so you, the liaison will sit on that committee, just like we did with the middle school, so you'll have secret rest architects from all across the southeast that are, that are gonna bid on that project.
But yeah, like you're saying, there's nothing wrong if, like, we're, we're working with SGR, SGA Normal, right, right now, we're Macon Middle Innovations, if we wanted to ask them, hey, what's your conceptual idea? You know, again, we, we can ask for that, but at the end of the day, when we finally pick an architect, it has to be on their qualifications. So I just, I know you're new on the board, so just, just trying to share that knowledge, because it's different, because most things, you think, you, you go out and get a bid and that's your best price, you go with that, but it's really strange on architects, you have to do it on qualifications, then they tell you, okay, we'll do it for eight percent of the contract or, you know, whatever, six percent of the contract, so.
I'd like to put some in a motion, moving on towards a workable plan. If the next step is getting the architectural piece in here and us to develop a plan, I'd like to put that in a motion. Let's move it on, let's, let's see, we don't know what the end result, we've looked at one, one group, and, but if you go through the architecture plan, let's give some people with understanding of what we're trying to put together here, an opportunity to come and show us what options we have.
I, I, I hundred percent agree, I think the big, the big discussion now is do we fund that through the mill rate or do we fund that through the fund balance?
In my opinion, my mind was on the fund balance, not through the military. My mind was on, the military's gonna have to come, if you get that fund balance.
If you borrow the ninety million, yes.
Yeah, it's gonna have to come down the road if, if we choose to go that way. But have you gonna pay this now if it's the fund balance? Let's go, let's, let's put something out here, because people need to know, I've had a conversation with a number of people, I'm not sure they, they believe that we've got the guts to pull this thing, to move it on.
I mean, I'll second that if that's a motion, but, but, I mean, is there perhaps a mountain that we have to appropriate?
No, the motion would be to advertise.
We've got a motion in a second on the floor.
What's the motion?
Plan design.
To put out a bid for Architectural Services for a new high school.
Yeah.
That's it? That's it, we'll decide how to pay for it.
What was it, Josh? What, what?
I understood it is, it's a motion to advertise a bid for Architectural Services for a new Franklin High School.
Plan design only, that plan is on.
That's step one of the plans.
Just get the plan.
To me, that's, that's moving forward.
It, would that include just say, hey, design a new high school or explore options in improving that make Franklin High School?
I think we, I know you, Paul, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I think we've surpassed that. I think we've all decided to keep it on the campus location.
Oh, keep it on the campus, absolutely.
And then looking at how we, how we handle, handle that, just maybe having somebody else look at it.
Yeah, be difficult.
I, I think in answering Paul's question, under, I'm gonna say concept two, there's a pro and con. If we start on the east end of that campus, there's less disruption for the students. One day, they'll go into the east side of the campus and go to class. We don't have all this disruption. And that's the pro and con of it, and it's, it's in our discussion. But the concept two, I can only speak about the concept two, and concept one, but concept two was less disruption for the academics, less disrupted for the students, more safety and everything. Anything else, Dr. Baldwin? It was, it was a way to, way to do it.
But the reality is, Mr. Chairman, we're just kicking the football again. We're just putting her down the road.
I feel like we're moving forward.
This would be twenty-twenty-three now, right, Lori, before it would come back up?
Yeah, if you don't do a tax increase now, you can only set your millage rate once a year.
Yeah, you once a year, so it's twenty-twenty-three before you'd ever see it again, and, and it'll be the same thing then, so. Get ready to stay in your high school for a while.
I have to say on all these votes to save my nose that I have to vote on.
You gotta vote. So, we gotta, do you wanna comment on this motion that's on the floor, and we'll move on to the next one?
Mr. Chairman, who's your?
Your second.
Who's your suggestion about the millage rate?
Oh, well, let's, let's take this, let's at least move forward with the plans. We're good.
And then come out of fund balance, is that what?
Well, we haven't decided how we're gonna pay for it yet, but it will, yes.
Okay.
Any comments on this motion before we move forward? All in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Three.
I, I mean.
Four. All opposed signify by raising your hand.
Yeah, picking an architect's cost is a head in the paper.
Ronnie Bill says we're kicking the football, we're putting the ball again.
There's no money at this point, the architect selection's just a hand in the paper.
But now, if it's budget, if the budget, we're about, we're by default in approving the budget on June eighth, saying we're gonna take the money for the Architectural Services out of fund balance.
We got other things to talk about, though.
Because.
They, they have to take action later.
Right, right, but, but you can't, we can't go back at, after June eighth, saying we're gonna raise the millage rate.
You can't go back and adjust the millage rate.
No.
We don't need to raise the millage rate.
All right, now, let's have that.
This is the only shot you get. This is, this is the one shot we had. Now, if you wanna go buy us, you'll not see a high school.
Ronnie, I'll have to disagree. I disagree too.
I don't disagree, I know.
We're still having this discussion right now. Lori, I hadn't brought this up yet, because I wanted to see how this school conversation was gonna go. There was not a cost of living increase for Becken County employees.
Correct.
What would a, what is a two percent cost of living?
About four hundred thousand.
Okay. I would personally like to see that paid for. I would personally like us to see some additional funds put in for our payroll study.
Is that to Gallagher?
Well, just for, I know Ronnie-
The results of that.
Yeah, just, so we've got one point two million in the budget, which covers about six percent, right? So, Gallagher told us seven to nine percent on average. So if you took that up to nine percent, say worst-case scenario, that would be one point eight million. Two percent COLA gets you to two point two million. So we're about a million shy.
That's my point. That's what I, you got it.
We're about a million shy, which is, what, one and a quarter pennies on the tax rate.
Well, you're shaking your head, so you don't think our employees deserve a two percent COLA on the year?
Oh, I think absolutely, but we're looking at six percent now.
For certain positions, but not everybody.
Across the average. Some will be more than six, some will be less than six. They'll all be over two percent.
Some could be zero.
Yeah, so a lot of.
Some could be zero.
If it's fair.
Some could be zero.
But if we're, at least we're addressing payroll, you know. And that'll be through when? There, we're appropriating one point something million now, employee raises.
One point two million to be, to be implemented following completion of, of the Gallagher study in late summer.
And, no, I'm shaking my head. I don't thought, I don't remember raising the millage rate, plus that.
I understand, Andrew. I, I know where you stand on tax increases.
You can only bleed so much.
That's clear, that's clear.
You can only bleed so much out of the people.
So we got other things too, Mr. Chairman. If you think about the COLA, we still have the school request of one point six. We still have some of these other things in, that affects communities. We still, like, talked about the library in Nantahala. So we have several projects that's really pending that are so important, so.
The thing about the schools, they just received fifteen million dollars, and that's why, you know, they've got the money there. It's not like we're no longer able to, they've got the money.
Yeah, but.
They've gotta decide how to spend it, but it's sitting in the account.
Say that again?
So, so this, this is their money. They just received, how much was it? Over the past two years, almost fifteen million dollars? Am I wrong in saying that?
Yeah, we've got, we, we got, I think we have seven, we got, we got a drop within the last two weeks of seven million. And fourteen, so we have eleven million in the last two weeks.
That's a three to ten point five total.
Total, yeah, that, that seven, that seven million is, no, seven million is what we got left there. That's half of the total.
So about fourteen, fourteen million.
We'll, we'll have about fifteen million in Southsack, we got, we have seven million within the last two weeks, you receive seven million.
I, I don't doubt that you need it. I just, it's hard to sympathize when you just receive fifteen million dollars, you know, it's, it's sitting there, you know?
We didn't know in February we were getting paid.
Yeah, yeah, so that's probably, you know, it's not like they're not getting it, so.
How do you feel about putting that in reoccurring costs, Mr. Baldwin?
Well, I don't know how we're going to address COVID without a significant part of that being recurring for at least until two thousand and twenty-four, December two thousand and twenty-four. At that point, you know, I think when we hire folks, they've gotta understand it's for a three-year contract at the most. And I, you know, I think that that's, that's doable in, in many of those positions, but a lot of that depends on what the state does with mental health and school nurses. I mean, we, we may, school nurses may all retire.
There, there's two bills right now that, that they're wanting to put a school nurse in every school. I mean, there's.
With no money.
They say it's gonna be up.
Well, they'll probably say, use your ESRA money to put those school nurses.
But then that does, that does the lines, but for, like you said, three years, then you gotta come back.
But if you, and you mentioned, Dr. Baldwin, like a lot of the capital needs, and would it, so if we could use and knock out a lot of, use this, this funding like, like we're saying with the, the ESRA money to knock out a lot of these capital needs, could we then maybe move, like the chairman was saying, move some money from the annual capital outlay appropriation from at one point one five, maybe take that to seven hundred thousand and move that four hundred thousand into operating and allow you, knowing that that would be a, a, a move for the foreseeable future, a, a permanent move for the foreseeable future that would allow you to put where you needed in operating, and use this, use this ESRA money, like Josh was saying, to knock out a bunch of these capital needs, thereby reducing the reliance on the county money for capital.
So, here's the problem with some of that, though, and that is, the East Franklin project was denied. We're gonna reapply. I don't know what they'll let us use that ESRA money towards capital, because how will, how are they going to read our reasoning? And will they apply those, our reasoning to those three issues that they, guidelines that they identify? You know, I, I, it'd be hard for me to say that how they'll, how they'll approve those capital projects.
Dr. Baldwin, that gets back to what I was saying earlier, though. If we offer you the flexibility, you use those monies how you can, then we offer you the flexibility with our funds. Because you don't know how you can use those. But our funds are a little bit more flexible. The, the difference is, is that we understand it's a little bit of a shell game, and that we're, we're probably gonna be looking into some reoccurring costs at the county level, three to four years down the road, when this happens. That's what I was trying to say earlier. You, you guys are just a lot more clearly stating it than I was.
Yeah, but I think we did, we will do agree on, on, like, like a number, like, if we're gonna say we're gonna move four hundred thousand from capital into operation, then we're gonna have to be good with that, and know that capital's gonna go to one point one five million minus four hundred thousand. Seven fifty. And our capital outlay progression's gonna be at seven hundred and fifty thousand, and your, your operating cost, your operating appropriation's gonna increase by that four fifty.
But what I would say to that is that, that's, that, I, I think that's doable until twenty twenty-four, and then from that point on, you know, I don't know what.
Sure, sure, yeah, it hits a roadblock, yeah.
And like you said, if you did operating expenses without ESRA money, you gotta have them on three-year contracts. But, you know, as far as county money, like the chairman was saying, that, that'll give you the, the flexibility there.
We could address the entire operations request out of ESRA. I'm pretty confident that we can do that, based on those three. I think it'd be easier for us to address those three guidelines through operations than it would be for capital, because that's what we ran into with, that's the only thing they denied out of our budget request, was those six classrooms at East Franklin. I think we can reapply and still have those, that, that available to us, but we're gonna have to be a little bit more specific on how that six classroom additions were addressed, learning loss on COVID.
When did they turn us down on that?
Josh got that information within the last ten days, maybe, something like that.
Does Love know that? The reason I'm asking, we got a, we got another meeting in July, in July, and I just.
Yeah. Well, we will have reapply, and probably have word back on the reapplication, but the next time we meet.
If we can't square, we're gonna get a, we're not gonna be denied again, then, right?
No, okay. So, I, I do, conversations that I've had with the DPI rep since then, and with, I had a conversation with Ms. Matt Mahan yesterday about specifically how that, those six classrooms could address their space issues. You know, the classroom at East Franklin is so small, you can't socially distance.
You're talking about three point seven five zero million?
Yeah, and that was based on what we spent at Southmaken for those six classrooms. You know, that was, that was three, so we bumped it to three seven five, but after not listening to the fire department, we probably didn't go high enough on that.
Not at four hundred dollars a square foot, you know?
Well, Kartuka Jay, our Southmaken was three fifty.
Yeah.
And that was in when?
Eighteen years ago.
Well, that, that, we, we spent three million dollars, and so I budgeted three seven five for the six classrooms at East Franklin, it's all good.
Oh, I mean, but how could you?
So it can have a lot of impact.
I mean.
But that would just give flexibility, and they wouldn't think that we could.
But you know what? Thing too, though, is that in that discussion, and then you go back to the high school, what's it gonna cost to repair the high school when you start going in there?
You can't re, the high school, the high school, we decided a long time ago, it's not, we put a lot of money in the high school with QVAD, QZAB and QSCAB or whatever it was. You know, we put bathrooms in the gym, which wasn't there. We redone the main building, electrical the best we could. We spent a lot of money there and didn't, and, and, and really didn't touch it. Spent millions and didn't touch it. You know that.
There's, there's copper plumbing.
Oh, yeah. Asbestos, we took the asbestos.
I'm ready to go eat supper.
They're doing asbestos re, reanimation on that one, right?
You know who's gonna be here all night?
Oh, it ain't seven thirty. Gunsmoke gonna even come.
I ain't got anywhere to go, but I do.
Gotta go home. Gotta go to work. I've got, I won't have to be there till five thirty anymore.
We'll spend everything we can.
I know we've been here a long time. Mr. Manager, let me ask you a question. I'm noodling through my mind here. If we raise the property tax rate to point four oh, which would be a two and a half cent increase, that would be roughly one point six, about a two million dollar increase, Lori. Could we move an additional eight hundred thousand into your tariff department, our pay plan?
Pay plan study.
I'm gonna say, Lori just said it's probably gonna take two million. We can give thirty thousand to the library, and I recommend we put the rest into a building fund for the new high school. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Is the two percent COLA in there as well, or just the?
I, I think that y'all determine that when you do your payroll. I'm, I'm up to y'all on that. I just heard what you said on your two point two million. I'm asking, I'm just throwing the nugget out there. I'm, I'm asking, so.
Okay, so.
You know, I think it's a.
Because what's, what's his?
If you wanted to do a two percent COLA, basically July one, plus the nine percent on the pay plan, that, at that average number, that would take one point two five pennies on the tax rate. Which is a million dollars.
One and a quarter, so, okay.
So, um, so you're saying if you raise it two and a half pennies, you'd gain another million?
That you would, start your, I know it's one out of ninety, but at least that's your forward on towards your referendum, or is it start paying for it?
That would at least put the referendum at a, at a, maybe a ten percent chance of passing, but if it don't pass, then it will be this hard. If you are gonna continue with the school, it would be better than hitting the referendum all at once. And plus, I would also recommend, Mr. Chairman, if, in, if this is where we're going, is we take a portion of that money and, and increase our contingency fund for some of these projects that we've talked about, that's minor, you know, comparison. That, that we have come up in the middle of the year, that we always will have, but I would increase the contingency out of some of that if that should pass, Mr. Manager. What do you think?
Three, y'all think it's a good idea? I think it's great.
You can love it.
Okay, so just to recap, two cents.
Two and a half.
I'm sorry, two and a half cents gets us about two million dollars. No? Sorry, I'm confusing myself.
Said eight hundred thousand per penny.
In her credit, she's the only one that can.
Twenty point six, it's another half square.
Okay, it is two million, sorry. I'm just like, my brain's fried. So two million, okay. So if we did four hundred K for a two percent COLA, eight hundred, eight hundred, six hundred thousand to get us to one point eight on the pay study, okay? That's a million.
That, that, that is, in my opinion, the most important thing in Making County, so that's even more important than the high school. We've gotta take care of our employees.
What's the other million dollars then?
We're not gonna have them, can we left?
Exactly right.
Keep losing them.
What's the other million go to?
I was suggesting to just put a, put an ad setting aside towards our building.
I mean, we've got, you know, we got the, you got whatever it is gonna be at the, at the National Guard Armory, it's gotta be the building we gotta finish in Nantahala. We got, we got several projects, and we got some very small projects, community projects to go along with that, so. Actually not, you know, if we put that in contingency, it always makes it easier when we have these requests, whether it be, you know, from the, you know, if, from the community fund, or whatever it is.
And speaking of that, I think it would be good, we do have a, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
We do have numerous projects, like the building in Nantahala, you know, we need to settle on, i- is that building gonna be used for a community center slash library, or is the library going somewhere else, and we're gonna renovate that in this year? Are we gonna still do the National Guard Armory in this year? But we need to pick out a few, one of those at least.
And prior to that.
Then we prioritize those, hey, we're gonna do this one this fiscal year, this one next fiscal year, and this one three years from now. But just so we can have some idea of how we can lay that money out.
Will you work on that?
Going back to what Mr. Higgin called it, it's the plan that we need to put out here for the next three to five years.
Try to give you the flexibility to do that. Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner, go ahead.
Here's, here's what gets me. I mean, you talk about a plan. Where's the plan? Like, what is the plan? Like, here we're talking about spending a couple million more dollars. Like, my business has a plan, and like, I, I try to, it never works perfectly, but what, what's the plan right there? Like, we're spending a couple more million dollars raising the mill rate again. I say again, we'll have to raise it again, so there's two mill rate increases back to back. Like, I think we just need to stop for a minute. Like, I've sat on this board, like, I don't like people coming to this board and begging me for money throughout the year. Like, I think there's, it needs to be a point in time where Calwe School, like, this, this stuff gets budgeted. And all of a sudden, when they come to us, we say, look, we're, you know, these expenditures are for dire needs, and the rest of that, you know, we're gonna budget that next year. Like, I just think we're just throwing so much money really fast.
There's your contingency job.
Well, what I'm saying is, I don't wanna keep adding to the contingencies. The people keep coming, and we just throw them, just throw them little tidbits. I feel like I sit here and people walk up, and I say, hmm, that's a good. hmm, that's a good story, yeah, let's give you, like, I want a plan, like, I don't feel like it's my money to give away, so my position is, 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 let's, like, let's not halfway do this. If we're going to do it, let's do it. If we're not, let's not, but we're going to up, go halfway there and just kind of hope the referendum passes, but if it doesn't pass, then we're going to go ahead and raise the mill rate anyways, but like, you know, I just want to get together.
I, I don't disagree with you saying at all on the schools. I'm worried about them, how we're going to afford that, how we're going to afford this pay plan. I don't think one point two, one point three is going to touch it. I'm more concerned about that and giving us the flexibility there to handle that, and I also think our employees deserve a two percent COLA. I mean, you're looking at what gas is going to.
There's no doubt employees are underpaid here.
And we can't afford it with where we are now, so that's just what I'm suggesting. To give us some funds to be able to handle that, and also give us a little bit of additional funding to be able to handle SCC, to be able to handle Nantahala.
If you're telling me it's planned, so. Employees, I'm, I, I support our local EMS, they're way underpaid, but I just can't support it just to raise it and stick it in the bank and say, whenever, you know, rainy day arises, we, we find it. I mean. That's, that's my only opposition.
Well, listen to what I suggested, Josh, with the two million dollars, approximately two million dollars was going to come out of that. Uh, how much is going to a COLA?
About four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand. I'd recommend another six hundred, six hundred to go towards the pay study, so that's one million, so that leaves, so one million left, and I suggested we use that to pay for SCC. Thirty thousand to the library.
So what's the SCC? I'm sorry, I might have missed that.
We had twenty-five thousand for Niquosi and ten thousand for Cowee as well, if you are going to do that.
We haven't paid for that yet. We agreed to do it, we haven't paid for it yet, so.
And there's operating costs with SCC as well, once those renovations happen.
For forty, just for forty-five.
Then you're going to be committed to the operating expenses, which of course you wouldn't want to take in a bunch of.
You won't have much left out of that, as, just for county needs?
I don't know, that's where I was going. It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily for the school.
It ain't to build a slash foot, I don't think.
So the tax rate, the proposed is, it would go to forty cent even?
I, I'm just throwing.
We're at thirty-seven.
We're like, we're thirty, thirty-seven point forty-seven.
So I know where Paul stands on it.
So forty.
We're at thirty-seven, forty-one.
Forty-seven.
It's just throwing millage rates around.
So, if we raise it two and a half cents.
Forty cent even, two point five three, two point five three would just get you to forty cent even. That's what I was asking, you know, that was kind of thrown out forty cent and then two point five, but just to clarify, if you want to get to forty even, it's the two point five three. I just don't, I don't want to mess it up.
Back to my point, the Franklin High School's important, everything we do at the county is important, but if we don't take care of our employees here, we're not going to have, we look at how many positions they have open. How many does DSS have open now?
They have eleven.
EMS, EMS has.
Seven.
Seven, Robbie's got thirteen or maybe fourteen.
Health department. You know, health department jobs are in the same boat, you know, there's so many vacancies across DSS, L.
And these people are, it's like Robbie's folks, I mean, they'll, they're good folks, but they, they're there to make a living, so if you don't take care of them.
And what will happen, Josh, with this pay study that we're in the midst of, whenever we get it finalized late summer, that will be brought back to you as the commissioners to give the final approval. So we've got money earmarked in the budget and, but y'all will ultimately have the final approval, you know, and will say, hey, it's going to cost X number of dollars, this is what we're doing, and y'all will bless it or deny it, but.
And I support it.
It's all right.
No, no, no.
That's why you're making your big bucks sitting up here.
I don't make these decisions lightly, you know, it's hard.
But it won't be so bad on them. It's a little strong.
Let's wrap it up, yeah.
And y'all need to circle back around, don't forget about the library and Niquosi and Cowee, that's thirty thousand, twenty-five thousand, ten thousand.
Seventy-three, four.
Do we want those three in the budget or not? You know, you're, you're looking at sixty-five thousand dollars.
Well, if, if this, if the tax increase goes through, I would recommend taking that to contingency. Just add that to contingency. That'd be the simplest, right?
I'm talking, add in what?
Add what?
I'm talking about, I guess, with the.
If, if the tax increase goes through, increase the contingency in this budget.
Yeah, but I'm saying, do you want to fund the library and Niquosi and Cowee? That would be funded out of tax increase.
Sixty-five, sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five thousand dollars for the three pieces.
And there, and none of that will be reoccurring.
Right. The library is recurring.
The library will be reoccurring, yes.
The well's a one-time, Niquosi, I guess it depends if they're going to continue to support that or. I'm just trying to get my notes straight.
Sure.
If I've got to bring y'all in ordinance Tuesday night, I just need to make sure.
My brain will be.
My brain is already fried, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, what, what are you looking for?
That's just my suggestion, that it's the intelligent, responsible way to lead.
Mr. Chairman, I make.
What's going to happen, Ronnie, is we're going to probably get that payroll study back. We're not going to give our employees two percent COLA. It's going to come out to two plus million dollars, and we're going to be hung there diving back into fund balance, so again.
And it's not going to be having enough money. That's what I've always said, that's my big thing, so I'll make the motion that, uh, that we, that we raise the millage rate two point five three cents to make it even forty cents in this, in the upcoming budget.
I'll see. Got a motion in a second, any further thoughts?
I just, my position is just because I want to see a plan in place, and I want to know where that money's going. Nothing personal.
We'll do it right now.
I just, if you can show me on paper where this money goes.
I think he's, we've seen it three times.
Lori, let me see if I get this right, four hundred thousand's going to two percent COLA for all county employees.
Yes.
Six hundred thousand's going to be added to the
Pay study budget.
To the pay study budget, which will increase it to.
About, uh, two point, I mean, about one point eight, a little over one point eight.
We didn't, we didn't already hire the pay study budget, but just.
We've already hired them, but once they say, okay, county positions need seven or nine percent, then that's the cost, we're going to have to bump everybody's salaries up to the proper level.
See, what we had left, what we had left in the budget at a flat tax rate, at a flat tax rate, we could only, they're saying you're going to be somewhere between seven to nine percent below market on average. We only had enough to earmark six percent. So what Lori's saying, by adding that, six hundred thousand, that brings that six percent to nine percent, which is the top end of where they said we were short, rather than being one percent less than the bottom end, will be at the top of what.
So, Lori, I'm in full support. So, that's, that's one million of the two million. The other million I was recommending, we get the library, the thirty thousand, whatever y'all tell me to add to contingency, and then I was recommending we put the rest towards the SCC renovation.
And the fire building, at the fire training facility.
Yes.
We don't know what that's going to be yet.
That's what bothers me, like, we don't know what that's going to be, like, how to.
Well, we've got numbers.
I just, the first million, I'm good for, second million, I'm.
But it's either an hour later or so.
But, but, you know, sure is a, uh, there, there is a compilation, Jack Morgan did it, compiled it, what it recalls to renovate the National Guard Armory. There is that information.
I just, I just can't walk out of here looking.
Two ports of needle.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I understand.
I don't know why I spent a million dollars on just, you know.
Comment. Eric, we gave you a charge this year, flat tax, do us a budget. Every year, I see the same thing, I've been here nine years. We charged him with giving us a budget, he does an excellent job, his team brings it in here, and then we all have these personal warrants, we blow it all to pieces. We charged him to do it with no tax increase, and here we are now, looking at raising property taxes to over two mils. We've blown this budget all to pieces, and we don't need to even go through this budgeting process. Uh, we should approve every expenditure as it happens. We need more in contingency because we can't stay within a budget. We can't forecast a year down the road what our expenditures are going to be. So the budgeting process is really a moot point and a waste of exercise, you know, it's, 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 there's no, really no need going through this little song and dance, but here we are, on the budget again.
It's a starting point there. Your budget's a starting point, right? That's where we're at now, not what we need.
And if we individually didn't have all these little personal warrants and, you know, I think we could stay within the charge that we gave the county manager. I appreciate the budget y'all presented. I would gladly support it, but I can't support this.
Call the questions, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Got a closer statement, sir, go ahead.
So we have, we have, okay, we're going to, we're going to do it, two million dollars.
Two point five three.
It's two point five three cents.
Going to gain us about two million dollars, two point five three cents, four hundred thousand toward a COLA, two percent COLA, six hundred thousand towards raising the amount earmarked for the pay study from six percent to nine percent.
Right.
Then you have a million dollars, and out of that, you want to fund the library at thirty thousand dollars recurring, the Niquosi initiative at twenty-five thousand.
Well, it's one time.
One.
Right, that's one time, the Niquosi initiative at twenty-five thousand, the Cowee school at ten thousand, which is also one time, and then put the remainder in.
Balance and contingency.
Contingency.
Well, or a school fund, as Mr., as a chairman, we can certainly put that into that.
I would, I would put a hundred percent of it into paying for that school plan.
That's exactly right.
So the remainder, after that, the remainder goes into.
The new high school fund.
New high school fund.
Well, how about this, sorry, we put it in a contingency for now, until we see what the pay study number actually is, just in case we need a little more. I mean, are y'all agreeable to that?
That's better.
And once we get the final pay study numbers, and we know it's definitely going to cost X number of dollars, if we have to pull a little bit out of contingency, it's there, then what's remaining, we can transfer it over to the school capital fund. Is that agreeable?
Agreeable.
Okay. With contingency, Josh, Derek and I don't have the capability to touch contingency. Only you as commissioners have that, have that authority, so it sounds like, yeah, you're throwing a lot in contingency, but we can't touch it.
Touch it or move it.
It has to require board approval, so.
How much do we have left out of contingency this year?
Not a lot.
We didn't have a lot, we had, what, sixty thousand left?
No, maybe thirty.
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven, thirty-eight cents.
We, we tell.
All in favor? Raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Three to two.
Just to recap on.
Tammy, and we're going to need to say hello, Tammy.
Say hello to Tammy, she's helping out, uh, mine's, she's got, she's got smoke coming off this keyboard over here.
Tammy, did you get off that? Welcome, Tammy, it's good to see you.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Are we going to adjourn, people, next to you?
We will adjourn. We'll adjourn in.
Our public hearing is still scheduled for. And you'll advertise that so.
Second round, Commissioner Higginson touched. All in favor?
Aye.